Counselors, please take your seats. I'd like to call to order the May 17th, 2018, meeting of the Barnstable Town Council. Please note that tonight's meeting is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18. And then in accordance to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Seeing none, please silence your devices. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call?
Counselors, Beedenbender.
Present.
Crocker.
Present.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Flores.
Here.
Rapgrassetti.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Levek.
Here.
Mary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Steinheuber.
Here.
Tensley. Wallace.
Here.
That's 12.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get into public comment, we have an item which, from time to time, we'll have on our agenda. And it's an effort that was first brought forward by Counselor Cullum to recognize people in our community that are, you know, doing good work in our community. And we call them hometown heroes. So from time to time, you'll see it on our agenda. So tonight, we're very pleased to have Lenore Lyons in to be honored as a hometown hero. And I'll have Counselor Beedenbender introduce her.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for making time on tonight's agenda. Thank all of you. A couple of months ago, Counselor Cullum suggested the idea of recognizing individuals in the town who are making a difference. As President Steinheuber mentioned, these hometown heroes, through their special connections and efforts with others, raise our community up and help it to thrive. Back in March, Melissa Hirsch, the Arts and Culture Coordinator for the town of Barnstable, told me about Lenore Lyons, an art teacher who lives in Centerville. Ms. Lyons, who's been a resident of Barnstable for 33 years, is the founder of The Key Idea. The Key Idea is a multi-generational community art project that explores the idea of what a key might unlock for an individual. In 2015, it started as a project in schools across the Cape and culminated in an exhibition at the Ktuit Center for the Arts. Over 2,000 people participated. The project has expanded over the past couple of years, and to date, it has engaged over 6,000 individuals. This past February, The Key Idea was part of the Smithsonian's Anacostia Community Museums Project, The Key to Community. While most of the works are uplifting, some are unsettling. One woman in her 80s wrote touchingly about losing the keys to her car, her license to drive, and her independence all too soon. A 12-year-old child talks about the key to safety and keeping out the scary world outside. Every district from Peetown to Bourne had at least one school participate, and Ms. Lyons has made a concerted effort to include those who need to have their voices heard, approaching organizations that work with disenfranchised populations, including NOAA, Bridge to Hope, and the Robert F. Kennedy Children's Action Corp. With that, I would like to introduce you to Ms. Lenore Lyons.
Thank you. I'm honored to be here tonight with all of you and feel so proud to be part of this town. That said, I'm sensitive to it being budget night, so I'll stay on schedule. The Key Idea, like Britt said, gives voice to people who don't have one. It engages people from 1 to 100, and the unique thing about this project is it's both challenging and manageable at every single age. It's a unique project in that everybody who does the project does it with the exact same materials and the exact same prompt. And they're easy-to-use, familiar materials like Sharpies, but we start with a key. People pick a key, draw it, and then answer the question, "What does your key open or start or do?" In the summer of 2015, we collected artwork across Cape Cod. Here we are at The Pops one year, and this was in collaboration with the Cape and Islands Art Educators. And like Britt said, we went to every school district on the Cape. And this is only part, this is about half of the exhibit at Ktuit Center for the Arts. And since then, we've continued to grow. Last year, it was at the Boston Public Market, where we started with panels like this, except they were empty. And during the Week of Art Week, about 800 people participated and created a piece on site, and the exhibit was created right there. So what does it look like? This is how it starts. One-year-olds make straight lines; two-year-olds begin to throw in a curve. At 3, you can start to write your name, and at 4, you can say something important. The key opens toys for all. And so, taking it through, five-year-olds can often be a little bit sarcastic when they say, I say, "What does your key open?", and they say, "Uh, it opens a door", with the unspoken, "And how come you don't know that? You're a grown-up." So Phineas and Madeline both had an opening kind of door, but by 7 and 8, kids can be really creative, and magical thinking happens. 9- and 10-year-olds, I have found, to be so deep and thoughtful. Ava talks about opening the key to heaven. I have a piece where a boy wrote about a key to a giant refrigerator that would solve the problem of world hunger. And it has to be a boy. Only boys write about refrigerators. It's true. So, and when the kids become later adolescents, 11 and 12, they're still thinking more globally, but by 13 and 14, it's really all about them. So here, the key unlocks my ideas and theories of life. They're trying to figure out who they are. Here, Jacob writes about regrets, and you don't think of children having them so much. 17, 18, they begin to think of their future. Michaela, I love this one, "The key opens the door to the office of an award-winning director. That director is me." I'm a firm believer, if you write down goals, you are more likely to achieve them. Joe's is hard to write, but read, but he wrote, "This is a key to my heart. It can't be broken because it's strong, and it will not be on a keychain." People in their 20s often write about what's happening next: travel, adventure, finishing school. People in their 30s write about children and family and settling down. And this Jennifer, tried and tried, I just found out, she's pregnant! So I think of her with fondness each time I see this. People in their 40s are, again, thinking about the global picture, things that they need to do. People in their 50s are the wild card. They're all over the place. People in their 60s will often write about doing now what I didn't have time to do then. People in their 70s are beginning to be more reflective of on their life. Their 80s, this is the one that Britt spoke of, "The key that makes me very sad because I wasn't ready to give it up." And Ursula has that beautiful handwriting that we no longer see. People in their 90s often talk about God, future, and their upcoming final days. And here's my one 100-year-old, Ann, writes about her next adventure, her first days as a great-grandmother. So, in brief, that's where the project started. We have a few big exhibits happening this year, the Wisdom of Children. We're expecting about 2,000 pieces created by schoolchildren aged 5 to 18, and that will be at the Cultural Center. Please come see it. I'll send you all invitations. And here's just a couple more of children. "This key will open my new car. The car is an SUV, and the color of the car is blue." And here she talks about Abuela's diary and wanting to read that. This is an older child, an 11-year-old and a 16-year-old, whose goal is not to go to the military, but to make it home. The Key to Understanding is currently on exhibit at the Ostriville Free Library. This is a project on mental health. It was about 500 pieces done by people who suffer from mental health issues, and in America, that's 1 in 5 Americans are diagnosed with mental illness. So this is done by those folks, as well as their caretakers, which is pretty much everybody else, and first responders. So this will be a month long in three different libraries. Here are some of these. "The key opens a vault box where my feelings are trapped, and the key doesn't work yet." "My key unlocks and releases any negative thoughts locked in my head." And the one at the bottom, "The key unlocks all of your darkest ideas." So this is part of that mental health exhibit. And this is a, this feels like a real achievement. I've started collecting pieces in Washington, DC, in Ward 8, which is the poorest district in DC, that they're experiencing lots of rapid growth and change. The Key Idea will accompany a Right to the City, which talks about how Washingtonians are shaping their future. And it will be on exhibit for six months at the Anacostia Community Museum, starting in October. But between February and October, I will go down and collect authentic work from the people there, rather than just showcasing things from people on the Cape. So these are some of the community things that folks have done down there. The community is finding people you care about, and certainly, in Barnstable, we have that. I am so proud to be a member of this community, and I appreciate all that you do. Are there any questions?
Anyone have a question? Counselor Schnep.
No question, Lenore. Just a great thanks. I remember going to the Ktuit Center for the Arts and being blown away by this exhibit, so I'm glad that it has legs and it keeps on going.
It keeps on going, and where it will go next, I don't know. But thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Beedenbender, will you join me down at the podium? Yeah. So thank you for coming. So this is a certificate, hometown hero recognition, so I'll just read it. The Barnstable Town Council does hereby recognize hometown hero Lenore Lyons, The Key Idea. With the greatest respect and gratitude, I, Eric R. Steinheuber, President of the Barnstable Town Council, have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the town of Barnstable to be affixed the 17th day of May, 2018. Congratulations. All right. All right, we'll move into public comments. If members of the public wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, and limit your time to three minutes.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Duran. I'm a resident of Barnstable for 30 years, and of Dunce Pond Road in particular, and I'm here to voice my concerns tonight about the possibility of Department of Public Works utilizing the Barnstable High School fields to discharge waste from the sewage treatment plant in Hyannis. Sounds crazy, doesn't it? However, we're deeply concerned about the memorandum of understanding that was referred to at the most recent school committee, the MOU. It was stated that BHS Fields had been identified as a possible site to be used for below-grade leaching field. As a homeowner, I must declare that our road, Dunce Pond Road, and the pond itself, is a sincerely fragile ecosystem that has already been severely impacted. What used to be a small kettle pond with a walking path, much like Hathaway's, is now swamp-like, and an overwhelming number of trees are dead. The water level has risen to meet several driveways, and it has one of the highest phosphorus levels of any pond on the Cape. To even consider adding more water, especially septic discharge, to an already saturated ecosystem is unconscionable. Many residents are running subpumps 24/7 on Dunce Pond Road, which abuts the Barnstable High School fields, and several have had to fill in their basements in the last two years. Septic waste is the very last thing your constituents need. Our homes, like your homes, are our sanctuaries. I would like to know if a public hearing is scheduled or in the works where we can get time to gather our neighbors to speak to this issue. And this is my husband, Matthew.
Good evening. Thank you for taking time to listen to our concerns. I'm Matthew Cooneyo. I've been a resident at 180 Dunce Pond Road for, this is our 31st year. Over the past 20 years, I have watched the pond expand, the footprint, I would estimate is probably 20 to 25 percent bigger than it originally was. Like my wife stated, the path that, when we moved here, we used to use daily to walk our dogs around, has vanished. And consequently, with the ebb and flow, and I understand in March, we had four significant major rain events, so we always have a rise, like many ponds do on the Cape, and some of us are witness to that, and then they will recede with evaporation. And as we get into the summer season, the rainfall is less, so the ebb and flow will decrease. But seeing my neighbors lose their basements, four of them having to be filled up to a 5-foot level, so that there's only a crawl space for maintenance of utilities, having their furnaces, all their living space moved up to the first floor, having their properties lose value, mold, and other issues that come with water being so close to a structure, is just devastating. So to think that it makes any common sense at all to even consider this is absolutely ludicrous to me to think that, you can do studies, you can have technology, you can have environmental impact studies, you can have engineers, you can have people that have studied the most brilliant minds, but they really don't know the outcome. And I reflect on the shuttle. We thought it was safe, and we decided to let civilians go up in the shuttle, and we know the results of that. So I'm asking you to do your due diligence. You're gonna, it's been proposed, I just found out about this yesterday, that this might be a possible site for millions of gallons of gray water or septic water to be filtered into the aquifer, aquifer, excuse me. And eventually, it only makes sense to me that it is going to enlarge the footprint of the pond even more. And we've had several houses that have been lost. One many years ago to a fire as a result of water rising into the electrical. So I'm deeply concerned, and I hope everyone here, being homeowners, would have the same concerns if this was happening to them, their property. Thank you.
Thank you. You can hand it to the clerk, please.
So thank you for taking time to listen to us and looking into it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak?
How are you tonight? I am really getting sick of these police harassing me.
State your name.
My name is Peter Christian. I have warned several of the officers, because they can't not walk up on me aggressive, that my dog gets protective. I was in the process of reaching down and grabbing his harness when the officer made the front of the cruiser, and my dog saw it, and the way he was walking towards me, he snapped out of my hand grip, snapped the rope, chased him around the parking lot, and bit him. And it's all because the Barnstable police have done nothing but mess with my dog. I had to get, what is this, the third new wheelchair, because they scared my dog so bad, he ripped my wheelchair apart trying to get away from him. I had a preacher at the coffee hour yesterday morning tell me that as soon as he saw Brian Jenkins, he got nervous. She doesn't even know my dog, and she could tell he was nervous. I had, was shown a picture this morning of two sergeants patting and loving on my dog up at the front of the green on the last Open Street Festival thing. You know what I mean? Ms. Dagwan has met my dog. I've had my dog in the city council's office. I'd take him to the dinner at the Faith and Assembly of God Church. I've never had an issue until I moved back to Cape Cod. It's because these officers get some kind of sick thrill watching my wheelchair apart. And the only reason I got this wheelchair is due to a biker friend of mine who happened to find it on Craigslist. I went and got fitted for a new chair today, but without that, I would've had nothing because the other scooter I was using died. I just, I'm tired of it. I just want to be left alone. That's it. I just want to be left alone, and these cops can't figure that out, and that pisses me off. I had an officer threaten to slit my dog's throat. Now, it's getting so bad, I am worried for our safety, and I'm about to start carrying weapons again. I gave that life up a long time ago, and I don't want to be there. I'm trying to be a better person, but it's hard when I'm getting hassled. Every time I turn around by Barnstable police, and I'm not doing anything. I'm too old and crippled to do stupid crap anymore. You know what I mean? I just want to be left alone. That is all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there any council response to public comment? All right, we're gonna move into Town Manager Communications.
Welcome, Mark.
Good evening. Mark Els, Town Manager. This is my Town Manager's report for the period of May 4th through May 17th, 2018. Before I get into the report, I'll just share that I was over at a Mass. DOT public hearing at the RTA. It started at 6:30 this evening, where they're reviewing the capital improvement plan for the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. So I had the opportunity not only to talk to the various projects that we have ongoing here in the town of Barnstable, such as the Route 28 versus, or the Route 28 and Willow Street project that is going to be bid in April and moving forward, and also to support all the other major projects that go through a very rigorous review process across the Cape. So certainly to speak in favor of all of our other, the other communities on Cape and their projects, but to specifically speak about the proposal to relocate the Registry of Motor Vehicles to the, to the RTA site. That is an active project. It is in design at this point. They're looking to design and commence construction this calendar year. It is a modernized facility, a state-of-the-art facility. It will accommodate all of Cape Cod. We all know that we are the regional transportation center, the regional medical center, the regional educational center, the regional commerce center for Cape Cod. It makes sense that the Registry of Motor Vehicles be cited here. It even makes more sense, as you look at the dollars and cents both the RTA and the RMV would save in relocating here with a modern facility. And it even becomes more clear as we look at the fact that the RTA will route buses from all over Cape Cod to that location if our residents choose not to have to be concerned with parking or driving their vehicle. You know, certainly enhances our senior mobility for people to be able to easily access, and all individuals to use it. So I was there to speak in favor of the project. I would encourage our public to speak in favor of it, or not to, and they have the right to go either way on the issue. I'll point out that the comment period is, I believe, through June 7th. You can go on to the Mass. DOT slash CIP website, and there's your opportunity. Anybody, you know, who has a computer can go in, and you can make comments about it, and let them know which projects across the Cape are important to you. This is a five-year look, moving forward, and this is a critical project for us, I believe. It'll really begin to create that transit-oriented development that we've been talking about now for almost half a decade. So I just wanted to share that with you, that that hearing was tonight, and you have the opportunity to comment through early June. Thank you. We are proceeding with the tasks in the action budget calendar for 2019 as scheduled, and in accordance with sections of our charter, we've submitted printed copies to the, on the town's bud, operating budget to the Town Council, and we put it on the website. So anybody who wishes to view this, if you don't have a hard copy of it, you can certainly go to our website, and you can view it there. We'll be commencing review of the 2019 operating budget later this evening. We've received a Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee report on the FY19 operating budget. It's attached and in your packet. It's also online, if you wish to view it there. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, our Finance Director, Mark El, Mark Milne, sorry, and all of the directors and their staffs for assisting in the preparation of the budget, especially this year. We went through some major changes and reorganizing. Everybody did a great job, met all their deadlines, kept in mind our comprehensive view of our community and the priorities that are established in our, by our Town Council and our strategic plan, and so we're happy to commence that this evening. We continue working with Mass. Department of Fish and Wildlife, USGS, DEP, which is Department of Environmental Protection, Water Supply, on the future potential water supply wells proposed for the 250-acre parcel northeast of the Hyannis water system. USGS will commence model running in the area of the Hyannis Pond Complex, and we're awaiting the physical sampling by DEP officials on the fish and wildlife land. They were out purging the wells and prepping the wells at this point, so we were out there clearing, I think, the last time I reported to you. So it's gonna occur, it's just, we're waiting for them to pull the samples and take them to their lab, so we will have a better understanding of the quality of water. The modeling we do helps us understand how different well withdrawal rates will interact with a pretty complex pond system out there, so we certainly don't want to have any negative impact on the environment. And we expect to continue to meet with them regularly until we come to conclusions relevant to this particular issue. We're still proceeding with the hiring process for the Chief of Police. I'm in the final stages of selecting a new police chief, and I'll keep you advised as I progress on this matter. We continue our discussions with Vineyard Wind, relevant to the proposal to construct transmission facility that would interconnect with a proposed offshore wind farm in federal waters. I met, as recent as yesterday, to further discuss the host agreement between Vineyard Wind and Barnstable. Vineyard Wind has also scheduled a boring test at Cobal Beach on June 7th. I've attached the details in your packet. I'll keep you advised as we progress on this matter as well. I received notification of our community's designation as a housing choice community on Tuesday, and I've attached the press release and the notice. Designation allows our community to access new financial resources, including housing choice capital grants and preferential treatment for many state grants and capital-funded projects. So we- So we, we knew that that was coming, and I was pleased to see that that's progressed to a point of approval. Attached, please find a draft letter for Town Manager and Town Council President's signatures expressing support for House Bill 4045 and Senate Bill 2300. These bills include much-needed funding for two key items, the $1.6 million earmark for restoration of the Hyannis Armory and $41 million for a new science and technology building at the Cape Cod Community College. So I've, I've put together a letter that both the President of the Town Council and I can sign. It's in final draft. I believe I've provided it to Cynthia as well, if we want to send it out on your letterhead, but at this point, I'm ready to proceed, but I wanted to allow you certainly the opportunity to review and modify if appropriate. At this point, I'd ask Director Dan Santos of the DPW to share a state recognition of our town's management of the Hyannis Water System, and I've attached the letter that Division Head Kaiser received from DEP.
Welcome, Dan.
Thanks, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mr. President, and members of the council. I'm delighted to be here on, on this matter, and we have a wonderful proclamation that was provided to the Hyannis Water System by the state at a ceremony last week up at the State House, and we actually, there's three, three different versions of this that we got. So what this award is about is the Department of Environmental Protection, every year nominates water systems for a variety of reasons, and they have a regional recognition category. And the town of Barnstable Hyannis Water System was awarded this regional recognition this year, and I'll just read you the contents of their basis for this award. Hyannis Water System, recognition for implementing long-term planning to improve its water supply system, changing plans to react to emerging contaminants, and planning, financing, and constructing corrective measures. In 2005, the town of Barnstable purchased the Hyannis Water System from a private water company. The town contracted with an engineering firm to prepare a water system master plan, which was completed in 2007. The master plan projected phased improvements over 30 years totaling $33.5 million, not adjusted for inflation. The town implemented the plan, continues to implement the plan, constructed significant improvements to the sources, treatment, distribution, storage, and operations of the Hyannis Water System. Sampling performed under the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule revealed 1,4 dioxane and perfluorinated compounds in some of the Hyannis groundwater wells in 2013, which results exceeding EPA health advisory levels and Massachusetts guidance levels in 2014. Officials with the town of Barnstable and Hyannis Water System rapidly evaluated the situations, formulated multi-pronged plans of action, engaged the services of multiple engineering firms, and implemented numerous contracts to mitigate and/or remove the contaminants. Since 2015, the town has installed temporary treatment, which was converted to permanent treatment, negotiated, installed, and activated interconnections with neighboring water systems, installed chemical treatment at the COMM interconnection, conducted pilot treatment studies, initiated investigations into new sources, and is currently preparing plans for further treatment. That concludes the text of the award basis, and I, I would like to personally recognize the supervisor of the Hyannis Water Supply Division, Hans Kaiser. He's the one that's really behind all these efforts. He's been along, he's been there since the beginning, and we can be proud of his accomplishments and the care that he takes in overseeing and managing the Hyannis Water System despite lots of challenges. Hans, just have a standing. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Mark, I just want to mention, the, the letter that you drafted is in our packets, and I know that's somewhat time-sensitive because that's being considered right now up at the State House, and I know the Cape delegation is supportive of those items, so I just want to ask the council for a show of hands, just to kind of get their opinion whether I can sign this letter along with the town manager to put our, our voice into supporting, funding for the armory and for the science building, so let's ask for a show of hands. All right? We'll put that together. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. The last item on my agenda is for myself and Peter Lent, our Economic Development Coordinator, to discuss what we're going to do relevant to stakeholder engagement as we move forward with our economic development program, and I, I just wanted to pause for a minute to start to link it up and show you, this is just one small example of how we're at, at the top of our thinking and what we do. We look to your strategic plan and our mission statement, and we try to carry that right down through what we're implementing and how we're implementing it. So certainly, we're all familiar with our, our mission statement on protecting our town's quality of life and unique character, engaging our citizens, and enacting policies that respond to the anticipated needs of our community, and we do that, keeping in mind always sound financial management, open communications that engage our public, and certainly a good balance of allocating our resources to improve quality of life for our residents, businesses, and visitors. And I highlighted engagement because I think you'll see as I move through this that, that is a, I'm quite sure why I keep buzzing here. Oh, they're coming, okay, to straighten that out. I think I did this last time I was before you, too.
Might help shutting that one off, that one might still be on. That could be it. See if that helps.
All right. Sounds better. Within your strategic plan, certainly your priorities include, you know, public health and safety, education, infrastructure, environmental and natural resources, regulatory processes and performance, communication, economic development, and housing. So, you know, we're, we're always focused both on that mission and these priorities as we move forward with the many efforts that we have because we know that we are limited on resources, you know, funding certainly, time certainly. We want to make sure we're focusing our efforts on priorities. So as we go into the goals and we get more specific, encouraging economic development expands our tax base and increases the number of quality jobs and respects and strengthens quality of life, community character, and the environment. We're looking for market-driven, place-based approaches that build on our existing assets, a tradition of entrepreneurship, and encouraging economic balance, diversity, and sustainability. So as we get into these strategies and the various strategies we have to accomplish our goals and to, to, you know, maintain that vision, under economic development is to have economic development initiatives and incentive programs, retain staff and consulting services to support goals, and again, I, I highlighted that one, and I'll, we'll kind of close on that. Direct business development and assist to promote new businesses, encourage redevelopment of property, and review zoning to ensure that it supports appropriate economic development. So as we move into a set, setting of the objectives, which are even more specific than goals there within a one-year timeframe, they're measurable, they're achievable, they're what as managers, as we plan, implement, and control, that we use as control mechanisms to measure how well we're progressing to achieve those things that you give us resources for. Under economic development, we're looking at specific program, problematic areas such as business support, business outreach, having a better web presence, and, and tapping into the creative economy that certainly we have here. When we get right down to, okay, how are we going to do that, and how are we going to engage our public? You're going to see us, and Peter will get up in a minute just to share one of many initiatives that we're doing, but engaging our community, we, we're going to have ad hoc stakeholder groups to get market-based input on our economy. It'll help to achieve our mission, which is engaging our citizens. It enhances the town council's strategy by augmenting staff and consultants with local residents and business expertise. I can't say enough about that. As I have the opportunity to play many roles in the community, the, the individuals that are out there willing to participate, willing to volunteer in our community are impressive. They bring to us knowledge and experience that adds to our decision-making process, and so very specifically, we want to engage groups for a set timeframe under this concept of an ad hoc sort of stakeholder group where we bring people together on specific issues, whether it's commercial realty, whether it's developing a better website, whatever it might be, and we have them there for the duration of establishing how we're going to go forward with achieving the objective, and then we end it, and then we may bring a different group of people back in for the next one. So we're going to, we're going to augment, to those, we're going to augment our staff and at times consulting services with those who are out there in our community that many times, a guy called me from, you know, the marine business today and had a wonderful idea that we can incorporate into, into what we do, a little bit different area, but every day we encounter this. So, so we're going to engage our citizens in this sort of ad hoc stakeholder group approach that leads us to the desired incomes for economic development. And I'll stop right here and let Peter come up and just tell you a little bit about one of the efforts. I, I thought it would be a nice opportunity for you to meet Peter if you haven't yet, and just give an example of how we're going to do this.
Thank you, Mark. I'm Peter Lentz, I'm the Economic Development Coordinator. I'm very excited to be here in the town of Barnstable. I'm very excited about the economic growth and opportunities that, and possibilities that exist here in Barnstable, and I'm also excited about the planning and development team, its progressive and dynamic group that we have. And as Mark said, as part of your strategic plan and your economic development objectives, we want to carry out a, a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis to determine how we take your, your goals, your, your plan, and your objectives, and carry them out through very specific ad hoc groups that, as Mark said, real estate, what, what possibilities do we have for real estate here? Do we have an inventory of, of listings of industrial, of commercial, of retail properties here? How do we, if we don't, how do we get that? And so what we're going to be doing in the near future is assembling these groups in order to, to do this analysis, come up with a plan, understand what the strengths of the community are as far as economic development, what the weaknesses are, what we lack in, in, in inventory of certain things that we need to get, and, and then how do we produce a deliverable, an action plan that we're able to carry out the plan and make your objectives, your goals, successful? What I, I, as I said earlier, I'm, I'm new to Barnstable, I'm not necessarily new to the Cape, but in order to, to sell what we have in Barnstable, you need to understand what you have and what, what you don't have, and, and so therefore, this process that we're going to go through is going to help us and you understand what, what we're able to do as far as an action plan.
Great, I really appreciate, you know, the update on that. This is, this is great stuff, you know, starting a couple of years ago with the last strategic plan we did, we have another one we're going to do in September, but the council really made economic development a top priority, and we obviously had a new town manager coming in. I know it's been, you know, Mark's, you know, priority since he's taken over as town manager, and we've certainly moved in a lot of directions, and it has a lot of pieces to it when you talk about economic development, but one of the things you've mentioned there was the zoning, and we created the council subcommittee on zoning, which Vice President Crocker chairs, and currently they're working with some members of the planning board to develop different zoning changes, and a lot of that was informed by, you know, stakeholders and what are they seeing out there, you know, in the community, and how can we kind of set the table if you, you know, in a better way to open up those opportunities? So I'm just glad to have you on board. I know Mark's been working on augmenting the staff and economic development for some time now and allocating resources and going through reorganizations, and, I mean, we're really moving in a great direction, and I hope you'll continue to update the council. I know we're relatively new, but, you know, jump right in, right? But definitely continue to let, let us know what you're doing, and maybe through the manager to keep us updated, you know, we're, we're actually currently looking at different ways that we can, you know, streamline and more effectively, you know, carry out some of our goals. A lot of that in, in the committee structure, whether we're re-tasking, retooling, streamlining, creating a different type of committee, you know, all the committees are kind of being reviewed currently and just in a way so that we can, you know, eliminate redundancy, but streamline and be as effective as we possibly can with the volunteer base that we have, and also, you know, leveraging that talent that we have out in the community. People in, you know, in economic development, there's people out there creating jobs every day and building new facilities and out there getting permits, and just, they really know the grind of it, you know, day-to-day, not conceptually, but, you know, they're doing it every day. So I really appreciate this update and the initiatives that you have going on. Please keep us updated.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there any council questions for the manager, or Peter? Counselor Cullen?
Yes, hi, how are you? Thank you, thank you for the update. Just wondering, so the, the normal process for people to get on the boards and committees would be to go through the appointments committee. How will the ad hoc membership be chosen, and is there a way for the public to apply for that, or how is, how is that going to work?
Well, the, the ad hoc committees are really specific task groups, so the real estate community, understanding what is available here from, from available properties, what opportunities exist for developers and redeveloping properties, and so really, it may be task groups that are specific to the people that have the technical expertise in those areas, or say it's utilities. What are the utilities in, in the town, and how are they coordinated in a, and if a developer is coming into town, how, how do those partners come together, collaborate to make sure that the customer experience for that developer, that business is able to be done? So it, it's really, the ad hoc groups may be groups of specific people and with specific technical assistance rather than a, a, a committee, if you will. What, what we intend to do is, once we gather the information from these specific ad hoc groups, bring it back to, to the town council for your feedback for the, and then also work with the community in outreach into the community for feedback as well, so that the final product not only has your input, specific technical analysis and, and support by developers, real estate entities, whether it's specific business sectors, working with the chamber in the blue economy, whether it's other areas that make the total economic development effort, we'd like to get those specific groups together first and then bring out, bring that action plan and the SWOT analysis to the community so that we can develop a better action plan.
I may have one follow-up. So my, my request, I guess, would be that we make sure we're utilizing our civic associations as much as possible, and that we don't have like only Centerville or only Hyannis represented in any, any committee, because it's, it's very easy to do that, talent is clustered in places, and, but, but we're one community of many villages, and so I would just ask for that.
Absolutely. Yes.
I don't know if the manager has anything to add, but do you envision it almost like a town manager task force in a way, working with the, with the staff?
Yes, and it'll, but it'll also be depending on the objective that we're trying to, that we're trying to achieve and the nature of that objective, whatever it might be, but we have tremendous resource out there, not a lot of people. One of the typical things, even though we have wonderful volunteers who, who sit on our boards, commissions, and committees, many people don't because of the duration, the long-term commitment, so there's an untapped resource there that can be, just add so much value, keep us moving toward achieving, engaging our citizens, and so we saw this as a mechanism to, to mobilize that group of people as well. And so to answer your question, any and all, you know, whether, whether it be- And so to answer your question, any and all, you know, whether it be people who are interested in a, you know, longer-serving role but are interested in an issue, people who have expertise that we know in the community, they can come from anywhere. I will probably help our departments organize this and make sure that it's done in an appropriate, controlled way that represents our entire community. And certainly residents are an absolute part of that. But in many cases, that's who's going to be volunteering. So they're kind of playing a dual role there of their individual expertise plus the fact that they live here.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Council Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Relative to economic development, as this team collectively comes together and begins to do the SWOT analysis of the various aspects of town business per se, will you be breaking it down by category to see as we move forward what parts of the business community might develop quicker, more quickly than others? And also, there's always been sort of an image in the past that sometimes it was difficult for those folks that wanted to open up a business in Barnstable. There were some roadblocks, and I want to be sure that as you move forward, looking at economic development from a totality, that you're working closely with licensing, you're working closely with the building department, to be sure that we do have an open door policy so that folks, you know, when they look at Cape Cod and they look at Barnstable, they look at Yama, they look at Dennis, they want to come here to open up that business and basically increase our economic activity.
Yes, I agree with you. One of the things that I've seen so far in participating in the site plan review process that has been undertaken with various departments within the town of Barnstable, it makes that customer experience more predictable, whether it's a business or a developer, in understanding what the needs are from the community itself to be able to implement whatever business needs are or whatever development needs are. So taking that collaboration internally of staff, working with a customer, and then being able to be predictable and having that reputation of being able to successfully complete projects in a timely manner with support and collaboration from other departments. And I think that that's, the site plan review process that has been undertaken so far now has been great, and I've heard from various people about how it works better than what it was in the past. I wasn't here in the past, so I just know that in my participation, I've seen it work very well. And it's always putting yourself and your other partners internally as well as externally in that customer experience to understand what is, how can they make a project more successful, timely, and better well-planned in the community? So yes, I think that that's part of the process of what we're going to be undertaking is not only in the site plan and permitting review, but also in the development opportunities throughout the town.
Any other councillors? Council Rap Grissette?
Thank you. I actually have a comment for the manager. Welcome, Peter. Thank you. I think I can speak on behalf of everyone in this community, but how can we get Mastot to repair the potholes on Route 28 and clean up the trash? Because thus far, it's fallen on deaf ears. I've reached out to our state reps, and I've, you know, it's, I don't know what to do. It's just very embarrassing to drive on Route 28, period. So I implore you to do what you can and call who you can to make something happen, because it's pretty discouraging to drive on Route 28.
I will do that personally. And in my mind, we have, it's unfortunate that it exists, but I mean, seven days from now, we're heading into, you know, the peak season for this region. So I will call tomorrow.
Thank you. And, you know, I appreciate they repainted the fog lines, but if you have to drive off the edge of the road to prevent, you know, breaking your front end, it's really, there's some really horrendous ones on Route 28. And I'm not talking about just in Barnstable. I'm talking about the entire stretch of Route 28.
Understood.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Council Flores?
A comment to piggyback what Councilor Grissette mentioned. You know, traveling up and down Route 6, no matter whether it's exit 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, the litter is absolutely incredibly at a level that I've never seen before. And I know that sometimes through the Barnstable Sheriff's Department, we have folks cleaning up. I know it's a Mast DOT related issue. I've been in touch with Representative Tim Whelan as well as Will Crocker to see if, in fact, we can get that taken care of. But you drive down 6 going east or west. It's absolutely amazing what one sees, and we are getting into our season, and Cape Cod always has this sort of purist perspective from the public. We have to be sure that we protect that. So I think it's an issue.
It's absolutely an issue. I mean, it's a statewide issue, but certainly here, you're right. They come here, you know, they being us and those who visit us, and they don't expect to see that along any of our roadways. So certainly, I know it's a priority for Director Santos and our staff, whether it's on our water, whether it's on our roads, whether it's on our lands. We'll communicate that to the state, and I'll let you know what they say.
Council Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, going along with the litter, that it's not only the issue of picking it up, it's how it gets there to begin with. So, you know, we know the NIPS are coming mostly out of cars, but the trash that we see on the highway and on our roads, very often they're coming out, unfortunately, of many trucks that are transporting trash in one form or another. And I know that they have those covers to come on, but every one of us, I think, has been behind one of those trucks and seen the, just flying out the back. So as fast as sometimes we can pick it up, the trash is out there. So anything that we can do to enforce the rules that say you have to cover and tighten.
I guess I have a very frank question then. How diligent, relevant to illegal disposal, would you like me to be? It's a $200 fine if we catch you doing it. It's thousands of dollars, first-time fine if you dump it on particular lands. Depends on where you drop it. When we see it happen, we can do that.
Well, I would think the answer is yes, Mark.
I was interviewed by Molly McNulty, Jr. at Barnstable High School about this very issue. So she and I were able to, you know, we called up all that information, and I think I knew it back from my solid waste days and DPW days. But, you know, it was just interesting to look at, but I truly asked that question because, you know, sometimes, unfortunately, that's the only way to change behavior of adults. That's all. And so, you know, but we can certainly go that route if you believe that's appropriate. That is, you know, short of that, I don't know that we can stop what's occurring. We can react to it and pick it up, but I don't know that we can stop it.
Well, Mark, I know it's difficult to catch them in the act unless we're a police officer or a town employee.
Oh, it isn't. I mean, a bag of trash has mail in it. And I have a wonderful story about a young man who told his dad, dad gave him cash, he went to the transfer station, and his dad thought he bought the sticker, but in fact, I guess he didn't. And so we found the bag and we called the dad, and it was a wonderful learning experience for the young man, but no penalty was assessed there. But no, this happens quite frequently, actually. But it's truly, many times, like speeding, many times it might be our neighbor who's doing it. So we really need to think through this, because you all, certainly I will hear about it if we proceed that way, but we do have that authority. But certainly you all will hear about it if we get real aggressive. And then we don't want to be in a mode where our visitors, you know, perhaps they don't have the same stewardship of Cape Cod that we do. Maybe they do, but I, you know, don't want to deter them from wanting to come here. So it's a difficult, I ask the question seriously because it's a very difficult balance. But you've got to modify behavior here, because a lot of people do it, and they do it blatantly. So.
Go get them.
Councilor Beedenbender?
Couple ideas related to that. So, you know, there are, so for example, tarping, is that something that we could require of trucks, that if they have open loads in the back, that they need to be tarped? So if they show up at the transfer station?
I think whatever DOT requires, that's what they would have to do.
Okay, so currently, there is no requirement for tarping, then?
I don't know that. I'll have to check. PJ and Dan may know there probably is. If you've got a load that can blow out, you've got to have it covered. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So we need to make sure it's enforced.
Yeah. I mean, you know, there are independent groups like, you know, Cape Cod Package Store in Centerville is thinking of doing their own sort of cleanup. I mean, they realize that they are selling the NIPS, and they hate the fact that the NIPS are every place. So while we're waiting for a more permanent solution, such as the, you know, the additional charge, you know, you have, you know, businesses that want to do their part, you know, whether it is they're putting receptacles out for those things or doing a community cleanup. But I feel like we've gotten to a point where we need to do something sort of community-wide, where we need to sort of, as individual villages, start to coordinate sort of cleanup days and take ownership of it. But I also think it's things like, you know, what we're talking about, you know, you find people, mandatory tarping. I also think there's a certain amount of public education and awareness. I mean, I think the Cape Cod Times article series was good because it made everyone realize how pervasive and how bad this issue has really gotten beyond just sort of anecdotal. But I think we need to sort of take this on as an important issue for us, because it does affect how we're perceived. It doesn't make you want to walk the beach if you're walking on top of trash. So, you know, I'm for whatever we can do to enforce that.
Anyone else? Council Wallace?
Yes. I'm in the beer, wine, and spirit business. Yeah, you're not going to change the behavior. It's not going to happen. You can do what Montana did. That helped. They decided to have open liquor in the car, open containers in the car, so people didn't have the motivation to throw it out. We have open liquor in the car or in the truck. They get done with it, they're in possession of that, they're in an illegal state, they throw it out. It's their protection. We know why this stuff is going out the window, but it's just not NIPS. Every fall and every spring in West Barnstable, the West Barnstable Civic Association puts together their spring cleanup. And I do this myself, and I walk from the railroad tracks down to Our Lady of Hope Chapel on one side and down the other way, coming back. So it's about maybe a two-mile walk, and I pick up about six large garbage bags full of trash. Now certainly, NIPS are a problem, and I do pick up a lot of those. However, to fill six bags isn't about NIPS. It's about a whole bunch of other things and things that we haven't done as a society, I think. When I was young, we had, you know, every little bit hurts. We had advertisements about pitch in, and there's none of that going on now. And I think in our little village of West Barnstable, we've taken an initiative. We've cleaned up our village on our own. And certainly, the town and the DPW has helped us, supplying us with the tools to do that. But I think we need to take an initiative in this town that all of our communities get together and have an annual day where we all pick up our town and make it clean and neat and presentable to the rest of the world, because people are coming here from all over the world. And I think if we just do it on our own, it'll be faster, more effective, and we'll have a sense of pride that we've never had before. So I will take the initiative on myself to organize all of these civic associations, Marsden's Mills, Greater Hyannis, whether it's BVA as well as WBCA, and see if we can't organize and create an initiative to have a day when we just clean up our town. And I think that's the best thing we can do. A lot of people talk about adding a five-cent deposit onto NIP bottles, but I got to tell you, when I'm doing my cleanup, that's only a portion of the problem. I'm picking up 750 milliliter bottles, 1.75-liter bottles, 12-ounce cans, 1-liter bottles, every conceivable size is out there and being thrown out of the car or the truck window. Putting a tax on a particular size is not going to create a scenario where the problem is going to go away. First of all, they think the reason it will help is because it will motivate people to pick up a NIP bottle. But I'll tell you, there's a lot of cans and a lot of other sizes out there that there is already a five-cent deposit on, and they're not getting picked up. So I just don't see how that's going to remedy or help the problem. We have to take the bull by the horns and act on our own initiative, and I'd like to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Dagwone?
Yes, excuse me. I agree with Councilor for Precinct 4 and Councilor for Precinct 11, who spoke about awareness. I think we used to have an awareness campaign where children in school were collecting, you know, they were told about recycling. So it's an education that we have to just emphasize again, and we have to make the community aware. Get people more aware of what's going on and take care of our own communities. Go out and, as Council Cullen has done in the past, and I think she does it annually, has residents from her community go out and clean up the beach. I work with the Bars Association each year, and they do similar thing, going around cleaning up the beach. So I think we just have to make, these are adults that are dropping these things, these are our children that are leaving all the garbage out there. So we have to really just kind of take pride in our community and just kind of make people more aware of it again and educate them about what we're seeing. And our community does not look good when you're traveling the highways and going on some of the beaches.
I would agree that certainly an educational program should perceive, proceed a punitive program. So we're more than happy to put together public service announcements and think about, I don't want to add more signs, but communications to just say, hey, you know, keep Cape Cod beautiful. And, you know, certainly, just so you know, if you actually are able to organize, as you've described, DPW will regularly, under a controlled sort of scenario with groups, assist by going to a particular point and taking that trash once it's gathered and assisting. So I think probably the appropriate way to start is with some sort of public service announcement, announcement and broad communication, maybe work with our schools to educate youth, and then when groups are coming out to do the cleanup, along with what we're already doing, we'll help out.
Yep. And DPW has done a great job over the past number of years that I've been involved in the West Barnstable Civic Association's spring and fall cleanup. They've helped out beautifully. So, you know, if we can just extend that to the rest of the town, I think we really have something here that we can move forward on. So thank you, Mark.
Yep. Vice President Crocker?
Actually, from probably Council Wallace as much as anything. Osterville had its spring cleanup 9:30 on Saturday, very successful event, and I'm sure they would work with Council Wallace to coordinate it townwide. John Crowe, President of our Village Association, did a fabulous job getting a group together. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Mark, very much. All right, we're going to move into, actually, I want to act on the minutes. So Vice President Crocker, could we please act on the town council meeting minutes of May 3, 2018?
Yes, Mr. President. Tonight in our packets, we have a minutes from the town council meeting, May 3, 2018. I propose they be adopted as drafted.
Second, all those in favor of the town council meeting minutes of May 3, 2018? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Council Communications, any councils have any announcements? Council Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two issues. The first, want to remind folks that live in the village of Barnstable that on May 30, at 6:30 PM, we will be meeting in the Harborview Room at the Courthouse Complex to review the streetscape plan as it is moving forward for the Barnstable Village community. So I'm encouraging anyone in this audience, anyone who is listening, especially those folks in Precinct 1, to attend that meeting to see exactly where we will be going when construction begins this coming fall. Secondly, over the past few weeks, I've received numerous phone calls and concerns about tree cutting that's ongoing on 6A between basically West Barnstable all the way down to Yamahtport. And there seems to be, although perhaps from some folks, it appears to be planned, more or less from my perspective and others, it appears to be somewhat willy-nilly that the tree companies that are employed by Eversource and other companies pretty much are randomly cutting down trees, whether they be on pretty much are randomly cutting down trees, whether they be on private property, whether they be on public, um, public property, and almost the defoliation, if you will, of what was once and should be the most scenic highway in America. So I have reached out to Town Manager Mark Els, President Steinheiler, and Vice President Crocker, along with Attorney Ruth Wile, and we're going to be moving forward, hopefully, to put together a town ordinance that in essence demands and confirms that in the future, if in fact we're going to begin to cut down trees, that there is a town process that takes place. Even though on the books we have the Scenic Highway Acts, we have the Yolking's Highway, it appears that they're being overridden by Eversource coming in and just doing what they want when they want. So for those of you that still want to have a beautiful Route 6A, and I live off of 6A in Comerquid, it's imperative upon us as a community to be sure that we put into place processes and procedures that do not allow that to occur. And whether it's Eversource, whether it's a cable company, whoever it might be, from my perspective, trees are sort of very sacred. And before cutting down a tree, there has to be a process in place to be sure that if one is cut down, that it is replaced, whether it is on public property or private property that is facing 6A. If you go up towards Stonehedge, if you go up towards Red Wing Lane, which is on 6A, take a look, take a peek, you'll see exactly what I mean. There are some areas and stretches of 6A that have absolutely been horrifically damaged over the past two or three weeks. So hopefully, we'll be moving that forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Flores. I'd actually like to invite up our Superintendent McMayor Brown. She has an announcement I'd like to get out to the public, so have her come up. Welcome.
Good evening. So I'd like to update the Town Council as well as our community on events, if you will, that have occurred at Centerville Elementary School. As you know, Centerville Elementary, we educate approximately 262 kindergarten through third graders. Yesterday, 50 of those students were absent from school, and we dismissed another 20, all with similar symptoms in terms of nausea, vomiting, and other things. So what we did last night, knowing that it was probably some type of virus, our, before we cleaned last night, our nurse leader, Pam Sabrowski, had contacted the local public health nurse, the Department of Public Health, as well as our district physician, Dr. Katie Rudman, to talk about the symptoms that we were seeing at the school. And certainly, thank goodness for school nurses. Unfortunately, the Centerville school nurse had to leave yesterday as well with the same symptoms. So Pam Sabrowski took over in, in sort of finishing up the day and making those points of contact that I described. The, the, I guess, if you will, the advice from the medical professional community that she had contacted was all signs point to the norovirus. That can't be confirmed unless an individual is tested for it. So we have no way of knowing for sure unless one of the children or staff members went to their own physician and was specifically tested for it. But again, all signs point to that virus. Learning that yesterday afternoon, what we did was assign some additional custodians to the school. We had previously purchased, purchased a special, special equipment to do disinfection. The Department of Public Health had recommended a certain, something that we should be using, which we were using to disinfect last night. Today, the, again, out of 262 students, 101 students did not report to school, and 18 staff members were out, out of 50 staff members. So given that, again, in consultation with the Department of Public Health, our district physician, we decided that we would close tomorrow, just in the best interest of our students and staff. That also allows us the opportunity to do another cleaning tonight, continue the deep cleaning tomorrow. Our understanding is, is that the norovirus lasts from one to three days, those symptoms. We've asked our parents, who have been incredibly supportive and understanding, not to return children to school until they are symptom-free for 24 hours. Same goes for our staff. So given the weekend, tomorrow being Friday, it seems as though that's the best course of action, number one, to allow us to further disinfect the school, but also to give opportunity for all to get well again. And we look forward to reopening it on Monday and welcoming back as many as we can.
Thank you, thank you for that update. Are there any questions for the Superintendent? Councilor Rap Grissette?
Hi, I'm sorry to hear that, and I hope everyone's feeling better. Is there any precautions being taken with regard to the transportation, the buses being cleansed that they ride on?
It's interesting that you mentioned that. I was just, as I was sitting there, was contacted by a parent who emailed me who asked the same question and had indicated that her, that their daughter had witnessed the bus driver cleaning, cleaning up some vomit on the bus. So I'm in touch with our Transportation Director this evening to make sure, number one, that our bus drivers are aware and that we're taking precautions with the buses as well. Right now, everything is contained to Centerville. I just looked at our attendance rate for all the other schools. We're still in the 90 percentiles for that, so we're not seeing that dip in any way. But you have to imagine, right, that there are siblings involved. You know, there may be siblings of, of Centerville that attend some of our other schools, that we may see that spread. So we are getting some information out to the rest of the school nurses as well as the principals. We need to really emphasize with our families and with students at school, hand washing is really, really important. We know this virus spreads from hand-to-hand contact as well as within the air. It can live on surfaces for some time, which is why it's important to wipe down desks, doorknobs, you know, any places where there's a lot of hands touching things. So that's, that's our plan of action at this point.
And not just siblings, but obviously, kids from various schools come together for sports activities. There was scout meetings tonight. So it's, it's a lot of, you know, community activities where the kids get together. Any other councilors? Councilor Cullen?
This is actually for a follow-up on John Flores. It's not, I'm sorry, not for, not for the superintendent. Sorry about everybody being sick. Hopefully, my kid's safe.
Hold that thought. Then is there any other, any other questions for the Superintendent? Councilor Flores?
Yeah, just a comment. You know, the norovirus is such a difficult thing to track down and figure out where it started and where it came from. You almost have to, in essence, sanitize and sterilize the entire school, which is almost impossible. So you have a, a pretty big task ahead of you. And, you know, obviously, even bringing in outside resources as opposed to keeping everything internal. There are specialized companies that do that. They deal with that. That's something you might want to think about. Because, you know, it's a very serious kind of virus that, you know, lasts anywhere from a day to four days. And the symptoms that you mentioned, the vomiting, the diarrhea, everything else that goes along with it is, can actually cause death from norovirus. So it's something we have to take very seriously and sanitize that entire building.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Councilor Dagwone, did you have a question for Superintendent?
Just that we have various kinds of viruses. What's any specific symptoms that denotes that this is a nor, norovirus?
It's specifically the nausea, vomiting, and diarrhea. And it, and again, it seems to come, come on quickly. Also, we've been informed that as soon as someone has those symptoms, they're considered contagious. Again, which is why it's really important for our staff or students to stay home if they have any of those symptoms to, to avoid the spread of it.
Thank you for making us aware of it.
Thank you.
I've unfortunately had this twice. It's been like a decade since the last time, but you will fade extremely fast. You will think that you're having multiple organs shut down and going blind, all like within a half hour. It's, it's horrible. Horrible. Councilor Wallace?
Is it possible to be contagious before the symptoms are visible?
That is out of my expertise.
Anyone else? No. All right. Thank you so much for the update and for all the efforts there, you know, for the Centerville Elementary community. And hopefully, we are able to contain it there, and everyone comes back Monday or Tuesday, and we're moved on from it.
Thank you.
Good luck to everybody. All right, Councilor Cullen, you had a...
On to something else that makes me throw up. The tree removal really annoys me, and C Street was wholesaled last year. And it was, it changed, changed the landscape, and I was so offended by it. And I would support any ordinance. I'd be happily put my name on that. So if you need any help with that, please let me know. I, I am so offended by Eversource and their, and their leveling of these big trees. It's awful. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilor Flores?
Just a comment. We need to take control of this through a townwide ordinance. Now, I know that, you know, state law basically gives Eversource and a lot of the utilities a lot of freedom and a lot of flexibility. But nonetheless, we have to stand firm in this, dig our heels in and say, no longer are you coming into our town and cutting trees down without getting our permission and our okay, and replacing them where need be, or else the most scenic highway in America, i.e. 6A, will no longer be such. So we need to work collectively together. And it's not just 6A over in the Barnstable Village in Comerquid. It's C Street and Hyannis. It's other parts of Osterville. It's West Barnstable. It's any place where there are scenic trees that make up the beauty of Cape Cod, and we have a responsibility to protect that.
Any other councilors? Councilor Rap Grissette?
Thank you, Mr. President. I promise I won't open up a can of worms here. My announcements are with regard to the Mid-Cape Cultural Council, which I'm liaison to. They're actively looking for some money to be raised through patronicity, which leverages public support for projects like the one that they're embarking on, which is to bridge the main street of Hyannis to the waterfront with some art, three pieces of art. They've so far raised a little over $1,000 of a goal of $11,000. And if they reach that goal by June 16, then the state will give them a matching grant, the mass development of Commonwealth places. So I urge everyone to give what you can to that. Also, wanted to announce that on Tuesday, February 29, the Kattua Fire District will hold its annual elections from 4 to 8 at Freedom Hall. And the annual meeting of the Kattua Fire District is on Wednesday, May 30 at 7:30 PM. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Dagwone?
Yes, I just, excuse me. I'd like to announce that the last pre-tourist season, Open Streets, will be this coming Sunday. Hope folks will come out. We plan on having good weather. We've invited to come down and see the Ukulele, Ukulele Kids are coming back again this time. This is a wonderful group. We shut down Main Street, and you can see the Beautiful Villas Green on the screen here. We'll have all kinds of activities for all ages, so please come down to the Villas Green. It starts at 12, 12 to 5. And we've decided if we're going to call it off, it'll be Saturday night, just if the weather is not appropriate for Sunday. So come down and support us. This is our last one. The next one will be in September and October. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Okay, I just want to take a quick poll of the council based kind of on a procedure. Councilor Beedenbender has been working on an ordinance in regards to coyote contests. And we'll, we expect to bring that forward at some point in the summer, I anticipate. In the past with ordinances, as many of us know, the counselor or councilors are bringing it forward, would speak to the issue. There's two reads of any ordinance that comes forward, second one being a public hearing. So anyone from the public can speak or be invited to come speak. And as a council, obviously, when it comes to ordinances, we, and we've done this in the past, things get tabled, things get sent for rewrite, things get pushed to a later vote because councilors want to dig in more on the, on the subject matter, whatever that may be. So that's how we've done things in the past. But I also wanted to just take a poll of the council if in this instance that they would prefer a panel workshop type setup where people would be invited in to speak in a, in a panel format. So I just, it's more procedural, just quick poll of the council to see who might be in favor of doing a panel workshop type thing to take up this ordinance. So if I could just get a show of hands, who's in favor of doing a panel workshop for this ordinance? No? Okay. All right. Any other announcements? All right, we're going to move on to the orders.
Question, can, I was just asking about what a panel would consist of to, to Councilor Beedenbender. Would that be like a representative from, say, Powderhorn or something like that, and then...
Whoever was invited.
Whoever was invited, okay.
Oh, we've created panels in the past.
And it would be a, a open meeting, like we've done in the past, or it would be a closed meeting, open meeting?
Open meeting.
Open meeting. I think that would be really beneficial because I don't know much about coyote hunting or any of that. You know, I think it would be beneficial to see both sides, and then we can craft an ordinance or approve, or, I don't know. That's just my opinion.
Well, I'll ask for a show of hands again, who wants a panel workshop? All right. All right. We'll take that up when it's ready. We're going to move on to the orders of the day. We're going to take some things out of order. So I'm going to move to, actually, under new business. Councilor Neary. Picking on you guys because you're talking. New business, item 2018-145. Could you please read that item, please? And I'd like to invite Ann Spillane from the Barnstable Police Department up. Page 40.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business that may be acted upon. Item number 2018-145. The acceptance of fiscal year 2018 Legislative Earmark Grant from the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for the purpose of funding direct homeless outreach services provided by 10 community service officers as written.
Have a second. I want to welcome Ann Spillane from the Barnstable Police Department.
Good evening, Mr. President and Town Councilors. Ann Spillane, Finance and Support Services Director from the Barnstable Police Department. In March of 2018, the Barnstable Police Department was notified by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development that the town of Barnstable was being awarded an earmark grant in the amount of $25,000 to fund a homeless outreach coordinator, and that the money had to be spent by June 30 of 2018. The money was approved in the Massachusetts State Budget for Fiscal Year 18 in February, and the police department was notified in mid-March. With little time remaining in Fiscal Year 18, which to expend the $25,000, coupled with the challenge of hiring and training an outreach worker only through the end of June, the CHCD agreed, for this fiscal year only, to permit the department to use the money to pay for direct outreach aspects of the Community Service Officer Program at the Barnstable Police Department to be incurred with the commencement of the Summer CSO Program in early June. The acceptance of this grant will allow the department to fund personnel costs associated with the Fiscal Year 18 Community Service Officer Program through the end of June in combination with monies that were previously funded in our Fiscal Year 17 operating budget for the Community Service Officer Program. The funding strategy for this program in Fiscal Year 18 was to supplement the existing funding acquired in Fiscal Year 17 with funding through outside sources. This is a reimbursement grant for personnel costs, and the town must expend the funds upfront and then subsequently submit for reimbursement. There is a chance that we may get this $25,000 every year, but in future years, it would have to be used on an outreach worker.
Thank you very much. Any council questions? Council Heber?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation, but I'm, I'm confused on the, you're asking that the money be spent, this money, be spent strictly for an outreach worker that will continue throughout the summer or has to be ended by June 30?
Well, that's the rub with this. We found out in March that we were getting $25,000 for an outreach, outreach worker to serve the homeless. When I talked to, at the state level, to the representative there, I said it's going to be very difficult to do that between now and the end of June to actually hire someone, train them, background them, so on and so forth, only to tell them that at the end of June, their job isn't secured. So I, I told them about our Community Service Officer Program, and I said that is direct outreach to the homeless. It's part of that program is unfunded in the budget. Could we apply the $25,000 to that program? And they kind of went back and forth, and they came back and said yes. And they kind of went back and forth, and they came back and said yes. Because you can do that just for this year only, though.
Okay, so it'd be the best use of that money?
It would be.
And as grants go, if you close the door to it, very often, you're not given it again, so.
Correct.
Thank you for saving the grant, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other counselors? All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous, this is item 2018-145, all those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous, thank you very much, thank you Ann for the work you're doing. All right, we're gonna go back to old business. Vice President Crocker, could you please read item 2018-074 and continue the public hearing to August 16th, 2018?
Yes, Mr. President. 2018-074, I moved to open the public hearing and continue it to August 16th for the appropriation loan order in the amount of one million dollars for the purpose of funding the Kattuah Bay Entrance Channel dredging project as outlined in the fiscal 2019 through fiscal 2023 Capital Improvement Plan.
You have a second? All those in favor of opening and continuing the public hearing in item 2018-074 to August 16th, 2018? And that is unanimous. All right, now we're gonna move into fiscal year 2019 operating budget at the top of the orders of the day. Counselor Schnep, could you please read item 2018-109 and open the public hearing? It's on page seven.
This matter is old business, public hearing, majority vote, item 2018-109, appropriation order in the amount of six million, one hundred thirty-four thousand, eight fifty-nine for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Airport Enterprise Fund budget.
You have a second? And I want to welcome our airport manager, Bud Briel, this is your last budget with us, Bud?
Yes, sir.
And our assistant airport manager, Katie Service, good to see you both.
Thank you.
You sure you don't want to come back for another budget? You're done?
I can be sure of that, yes.
Okay. All right, well, welcome to you both.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you, President and Vice President and counselors for having us here tonight to go over the fiscal year 19 budget proposal for the airport. Airport by the numbers, the airport is an enterprise fund, one of nine within the town of Barnstable, operating with full cost recovery. Our annual operating budget has fluctuated over the years, and this year, our proposed budget is six point one million for fiscal year 19. We have 23 year-round employees and four seasonal positions, that is down from full-time positions of 25 that we have had in the recent past. The economic impact of the airport is stated here with just over 2,100 jobs associated with the airport, this is a report that is done by MASTA Aeronautics Division, this is the 2014 numbers, payroll at just over eighty-five million and regional economic impact over two hundred and eight million per year. We are in the process of updating that plan, we were visited by the consultants who are updating the plan for 2018, they came to us, asking us for information about our economics, that's something that perhaps the town may want to use as they move forward with their economic plan as well. The master plan is also something that we are starting soon, we'll have a kickoff sometime in June with our consultants, again, we'll have an economic piece within that plan, so that's something that we will be working with the town as we move forward on that as well, especially having our own task force for those elements of the master plan, we'll be working with the town on, on that as well. Just quickly, our airlines, we have JetBlue, they'll start their seasonal service to and from Hyannis to JFK on May 25th. Cape Air does year-round service to Boston and Nantucket, they also do seasonal service to the Vineyard, they have pulled back on some of their seasonal service due to pilot shortages that are seen nationwide, and that has hit Cape Air and Rettix Shuttle as well. Rettix does year-round service to Nantucket, and they start on May 24th with service to Worcester, which is a nice service to have because it will connect to other JetBlue flights right from here, from Hyannis, where people can get flights to Florida and elsewhere. Our newest tenant is Cape Cod Coffee, they opened their doors on December 2017 to fill the cafe space in the terminal, they received their liquor license just recently, so they will be providing Cape Cod beer from their facility, First Crush, as well as Cape and Island Distillery, they have partnerships with those companies, Cape Companies. On May 24th, we will start the construction of the out, of the patio and outdoor seating for the space, I think that will draw in others, not only from the airport, but from the community as well. And as always, free parking available for the cafe, just right on the, on the same side as the cafe in the terminal. For major accomplishments, if you can go to the next one, Bud? Over the past six years, the airport has leveraged funds to implement various airport safety improvement projects, the list that we have here, in respect to time, I won't go through each one, I think we've talked about all of these, and we have received appropriations for these in the past, but we have done a lot of work at the airport. If you wouldn't mind going through the, all the slides, just, yeah, you can go to the next one, I don't want to spend too much time on these. This is just quick snapshots of those projects. Our future projects on the airfield include rehabilitating runway 624, right now, we have an earmark for that for 2022. 2023 and 2024 include the reconstruction of some fairly old taxiways on the airfield. Now, for the order of the day, our airport fiscal year 2019 operating budget, our budget starts on page 463 of the budget book, so if you do have questions, please let me know. The Airport Enterprise Fund 2019 budget proposal is decreased from fiscal year 18 budget by about four point, excuse me, five point seven four percent, and about three hundred and seventy-three thousand. The fluctuation in that budget can account for some operating cost decreases to the tune of almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on various line items. Capital outlay costs for fiscal year 19 is nineteen thousand, six hundred, whereas in the past, it has been about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand for various capital outlay costs. The fiscal year 18 and 19 budgets both unfortunately used our reserves to balance the budget, to give us some time to improve our revenue stream. This year, for fiscal year 19, we are requesting just over three hundred thousand to balance the budget, basically the difference between our revenues and our expenses. The table that I have here identifies the shortfall, and it also identifies what we have done in terms of expenses to help reduce that cost. So, the budget reductions that we have made this year are significant, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, just over four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that we have pulled from our expenses to account for a reduced need to dip into our reserves. I have this list here, if you want more information, or you want me to go over any of the reductions that we have taken, please let me know. We have done a review of what we can also reduce from our expenses as well, we examined options to reduce or eliminate any of our employee positions. Unfortunately, when we looked at this, many of our ideas were rejected due to operational need or safety reasons. We did recently reduce our overall full-time employees by two positions that have not been filled, we had one layoff last year and one out of retirement, so we have not filled those positions, we've been able to operate right now with those not being filled. However, we are evaluating hiring a personnel consultant, that has been referred, several were referred by the Director of Human Resources to the airport to look at possible reorganization of the airport staff. In terms of our revenue and what we have done to reduce our impact on reserves, we have looked into new property leases, we've implemented new main parking leases, licenses and agreements, we obviously have the new restaurant café in place at the airport, we have also looked into leases with air, new aircraft parking ramp with Rettix Shuttle and Rettix Aviation. We are working with the town to implement the Park Happy program, I've been working with Liz Harts Grove in that matter, to make sure that the town, with their need, especially in the summertime for constrained parking issues, that they do have the airport available to them as a parking resource. We've been working with Liz and also with the RTA to make that a reality and help the community have a place to park, especially in the summertime. With the help of town council and town, town of Barnstable staff, we have issued a request for proposals on April 26th to repurpose and market the Cape Town Plaza. We will be working with the Planning and Development Department, with Elizabeth Jenkins and with town council to modify any zoning as we move forward for several pieces of property that the airport does own, that we feel we could lease and rent out as commercial space to a business here in town. Additionally, we have reviewed our airport rates and charges, we had our first overhaul of rates and charges in October of 2017, and we will do that annually, every October, we will review our rates and charges and move forward with any changes that we deem or the airport commission deems necessary. Development of the airport market plan has been moving forward, we've been working since November with our airport commission and with other outside agencies to develop a marketing plan, and we came up with our goals for that plan, we hope to be completed sometime July or August. We have identified four major themes or goals, diversify our revenue stream, enhance available land leases to improve project-ready development, improve airport transportation options and attract more air service, and to improve our general aviation services. Our next steps are to meet with our tenants, to identify, to make sure we're not working in a vacuum, to make sure that our tenants are in agreement with some of these goals that we're looking at as a community and as an airport, and then to have some outreach to community members, to businesses, to see what their needs are for this transportation entity within their town.
All right, thank you very much. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public wish to speak to this item, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? That's unanimous, council discussion on this item. Counselor Rapacek.
Thank you, thank you, Katie and Bud. You talk about needing to reduce personnel, yet I see the same 23 FTEs in the last three years, or in FY 2017, 18 and 19. Where is the reduction in personnel?
We, we had a reduction from 25, we did have 25 FTEs, we had a reduction over the past, I believe our retired custodian was three years ago, uh, excuse me, two years ago, we did not replace that position, and we also had a layoff last year.
Okay, so the FTEs in the book are a little off. Let me ask you, what, what do you use a financial analyst for, for a full-time employee?
So, our financial analyst that we have in the office helps us with basically our, our budget and our purchase orders that we have to do our daily business. Additionally, they're helping us with any of our grants that we have that move forward from either the state or from the FAA, so they're helping us process those payments. It's actually a very tedious job, there's a lot of work that that individual does to assist us in that manner, but it's mostly processing our payments.
Okay, and one last question, what does the noise abatement officer do?
So, our noise abatement officer is also our slash security coordinator, so she does two tasks. As, I guess, a few years ago, it must have been about 10 years ago now, Bud, would that be about right? That we did have a significant issue with noise, we had some, a lot of community concern about the noise at the airport, and so they implemented various noise procedures that the airport has, was successful with. Some of those procedures include putting in a flight tracking system, an online flight tracking system, so that if somebody does have a concern or a complaint, they can post that online and we'll get back to them. We also have a dedicated noise line so that they can reach out to us when there's an issue. We have many situations where somebody has called, and although the airport's open 24/7, there are times when we're asking our tenants to fly quiet or be conscious of the community that they're, that they're working in. So, we have reached out to Cape Air, to Rettix, to identify, you know, maybe an aircraft that took off early in the morning, and to talk to them about that, and we've seen changes in procedures at both companies to assist us in, in those issues. The noise has reduced significantly, but I think that's because of our efforts, and now that we have a dedicated person, they have a contact, the community has a contact that they can always go to.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cullen?
Yes, thank you for addressing the financial woes and issues that have been plaguing us over the last few years, I think, I just want to say again, I appreciate that you're addressing it and that you're looking at it from a productive standpoint. And also, I, I think it might be time for the 30,000-foot view to see how you can analyze what you've got as far as priorities and people and, and everything else, I think that's a good way to go when you're under the gun for, for funds. So, I look forward to the RFP coming back in for the Kmart Plaza, and I'm excited to see you guys thrive again, but it, you just needed to juggle, juggle a little bit there for a while, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the overview, I just have a couple of questions on the slide that talks about reducing the impact on our reserves by increasing revenue.
The, the table that we had?
No, the one that starts with new property leases, new main parking leases, new restaurant and café. Could you share with the council specifically what you envision as revenue increases? Because I look at, for example, the restaurant and the café, the amount of money they're paying for leases, virtually nothing, and I'm just trying to figure how you're gonna make money from some of these items that you're listing to basically make up for all monies lost on from other areas? Have you projected how much those will be?
No, we haven't made significant projections, but I'll start with the parking. One of our biggest issues is that our parking lot, we have a space that fits nearly 700 vehicles, we, you know, we have a lot of space, but we have to tap into other areas within town or other businesses that need parking. So, for instance, Mark Els has reached out to us, and he said that the hospital may need parking for their employees and for anybody that's coming to the hospital in the near future, so that's one resource that we will tap into to see if that we can allow or provide them a service to be able to park. We have other companies that have reached out to us that do have parking lots downtown next to the Steamship Authority that are really running out of space, they're, they're, you know, they're trying to abide by the new regulations that are in place for parking, so the only other source they have is to come up to the airport. So, this will be our second year that we're working with some of those individuals that are using our parking lot as availability for their, for their businesses as well.
So, how much does that raise?
Do you know the numbers?
It's close to 20,000 for the season, that's about it.
In terms of the café, we had started the café off on their lease, they have a three-year lease with us, where it's really, to be honest with you, it's a small amount of rent getting from them, they, we do have increases in that as they increase in their business, so Bud has put in a number of different increases as they reach different levels in what they're making at the facility. To be honest with you, it's slow for them, their season is just about to start, I think they're making efforts to bring in and draw in more activity at the café. I've been working with the owners to have different events that are regular events, such as paint and pour parties, wine tastings, and different events that will bring the community over to the airport and get used to coming to the café there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselors? Vice President Crocker?
Yes, I appreciated the presentation, then all of a sudden, the slides came out, and I thought we were at a farewell party for Bud here for a moment. I was Bud's liaison when he introduced the noise abatement, I was liaison when he brought forward and got permission to build the airport. Your efforts on our airport are here for 75 years or more. We wish you well and everything.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, nice presentation.
Any other counselors? All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous, this is item 2018-109, all those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
All right, hope to see you again, Bud.
I gotta say, that was the easiest budget one I've ever done.
Well, we didn't, we didn't keep it till 11 o'clock.
Oh, thank you.
Good luck. All right, moving on to the next item, I'd like to invite up our superintendent and our school committee. school committee. Item, this is item 2018-110. Councilor Cullen, could you please read that item and open the public hearing?
Yes, I'd like to open for a public hearing. Item 2018-110, appropriation order in the amount of $67,860,308 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Barnstable Public Schools budget as written.
Thank you, and welcome back, Superintendent Meg Meyer Brown.
Thank you.
If you want to just, as you get settled in, just introduce who's with you in the school committee.
So I'm pleased to be joined by our school committee chair, Chris Joyce, as well as school committeemen, Mike Judge, and assistant superintendent Kristen Harmon, and also, as always, pleased to be joined by deputy finance director Gareth Markwell to co-present our budget together. Thank you.
Great, welcome all.
Am I starting? So this is a great opportunity for us to describe both to the town council and to the community, both the, our needs as a school system and our accomplishments. And again, just every time I'm in front of you, I want to emphasize the, our great appreciation for the support of education in this community. It certainly is, I certainly have the sense as the superintendent of schools that it is a top priority of the town council to ensure that all of our youngest citizens receive the type of education that will enable them to pursue their hopes and dreams as they graduate high school. So thank you for your ongoing and continued support. So, moving into the budget, we have divided it into three sections, and I'm going to have Gareth just introduce the budget information section.
Okay, well, thank you for having me here tonight to present the FY 19 school operating budget. As I have done with the numerous presentations to the school committee this budget season, I, for the benefit of the viewers at home, I'd just like to inform everyone that our operating budget and capital operating budgets are available on both the town and school websites. All past presentations for the fiscal year 16 through 19 operating budgets are available on the school district's website, as well as our ongoing current year budget is available through our open budget platform on the town of Barnstable's website. So tonight, we're going to just take a look at a couple of sections at a rather high level, starting with just a few demographics about who we're educating in Barnstable's school system and who we anticipate educating in the upcoming school year, and then we'll go through the budget development process, our goals, major changes, and we'll close out with a few results and expenditure histories.
So you see, we have nine schools, beginning with the Inocab Early Learning Center, Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary School, Centerville School, Hyannis West, West Villages, Community Charter School, Barnstable United, Barnstable Intermediate School, and Barnstable High School. We have the enrollment numbers listed there for each of the schools. OOD stands, stands for out-of-district. Those are our students who receive specialized services outside of, outside of the system. Forty-eight students there in total. We are educating 5,317 students in Barnstable.
This slide here kind of shows our enrollment from fiscal year nine through fiscal year 18, our current year. You'll notice a slight difference in the fiscal year 18 numbers, 50, 5,100, 5,177 students as opposed to the previous slide. That shows, or this slide shows our October 1st enrollment of last year. So you can quickly see how different our enrollment can be at any given time of the year. We are, additionally, this does not include the out-of-district students, but an example of the fluctuation, we see an additional 55 kids within our pre-K system than we started at the beginning of the year, and an additional 37 students from, from October 1st. So at any given time, our enrollment does fluctuate, as you can see there. Our enrollment for the most recent years, really hovering around the 5,200 student mark. That, that is a trend that we have projected going out, kind of 2026 is kind of where we see our population plateauing, and we are working towards in our budget development process and staffing to that levels at this point in time.
You can also see in our student demographics, again, the column that captures the number of students, as Gareth has just addressed, as well as our special, the percentage of students who receive special education services, you can see through that column, we're at 14.8% for FY 18, which is, again, pretty stable. What I would ask, what I would call to your attention is the column for English language learners. You can see the percent increase pretty much by year of the additional students we're receiving in the district who are English language learners. This year, we're up to 10 and 1/2% of our overall student population are English language learners. And finally, the, the column titled economically disadvantaged or low income, again, we're seeing increases in that column as well. The earlier fiscal years, beginning with fiscal year 11, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education calculated those figures slightly differently than they are over the past, I would say, three or four years. So there, the fluctuation that you see there between FY 13 and now is, it's a different accounting procedure. But if you just look at FY 16 to 18, I think that's a more realistic snapshot of the percentage increases we're seeing for our students who are from economically disadvantaged or low-income homes.
Barnstable's school-aged residents. Our best estimate, and we do have some firm numbers here, but there are also areas in which we are using the best information we have available. We're looking at 6,207 school-aged students. We educate approximately 83% within the Barnstable school system, whether it being at our community charter, community charter school or in out-of-district placements. We send 2.9% of that population to vocational schools, 3.6% to Commonwealth charter schools, 3.2% in school choice to other towns, and 0.5% home skilled, homeschooled, followed by 7.1% in private schools within Barnstable.
This next slide details for you by town, school choice, in terms of the number of students we are sending out compared to the number of students that we receive in the district through, through school choice. So you see, in total, we're sending out 197 students and receiving 93. The next slide shows you geographically, by color as well, where Barnstable students, where they reside, and where they're attending school. So for example, I believe the largest number of students we have that we send out are to Dennis Yarmouth. So you can see that's the sort of the purple bubble, if you will, and they're sort of, I wanted to see if we, if the students that we sent out were sort of clustered around the sort of the borders of the town, whether it was more convenient. And I think what we see is, particularly for Mashpee, it tends to be where you see the yellow dots are obviously closer to Mashpee. We're always trying to get a sense as to why our families are choosing to send out of the district rather than retaining them here. Our goal in Barnstable is to attract, engage, and retain our Barnstable families. I'm less interested in recruiting students from other districts. I'm far more interested in retaining the ones that we have. But again, and it's, it's a bit of a challenge to, to get the addresses. It used to be the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education would send us the addresses of the students that were sent out. All we receive now are their names and their identification, sort of number that the state provides. In order to get this information, we had to call each district and said, could you please send us the addresses of the students? So again, you know, we'd be very, and I understand that the district has done surveys in the past in terms of trying to understand why our families are those. The last time that, it was before my time, but the last time a survey was done, I understand that only two responses came back in. So again, just, you know, please know that we're very interested in trying to understand why there's a choice out and why Barnstable is not the first choice for, for these families.
Just moving into more of the budget development, our budget timeline really, I've oversimplified it here into four basic categories: budget formulation, enactment, implementation, and assessment. And really, while I've designated these as kind of four distinct areas, at any time in the year, we could be working on any one of those segments. So our budget calendar really started in September with the joint council, town council, school committee meeting, and our meeting, the town manager and superintendent to discuss the annual allocation agreement. In October, we began our initial revenue and expenditure estimates. November, our budget guidelines were issued to departments and principals, directors. December, we received back from our sites, funding requests, enrollment data, student data, and within the month of January, we went through and reviewed all those submissions, formulating the budget. In February, we had an initial presentation to the school committee, followed by a formal FY 19 budget hearing. In March, we had our public hearing, and then in April, we had a adoption by the school committee, and that brings us to tonight.
So our goals were focused on the district vision. This past year, the school committee has adopted a new vision for the school district. That vision was adopted in collaboration with, with principals, department leaders, what we refer to as the Barnstable District Leadership Team, which is about 45 individuals, who presented to the school committee a new way of thinking about how we educate the children in Barnstable, and that is focusing on the whole child. So rather than just simply focusing on academics, we think that social-emotional learning is equally important, and you can't do one without the other in schools. So this new vision that's in the first bullet does emphasize the students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs, and again, with a focus on a safe and healthy learning environment where students are challenged, supported, and engaged. And through that vision, we developed our three strategic objectives, which you'll see there, which again, focus on academic learning, social-emotional learning, and expanding the community partnerships that we have in our schools, because we believe there's high value in including the community to support our students' needs in a variety of ways.
Kind of down to the, the nuts and bolts or the major changes in the staffing area, we do have some targeted pupil-teacher ratios. K through 3, we're looking at class caps of 25 students per class. Grades 4 to 5, we're caseload, caseloads of 53. 6th through 7th grade, caseloads of 105. And 8th through 12, we have a four or five-block caseload of 110 or 120 students. Taking those ratios into account for fiscal year 19, we anticipate the increase of 1.4 full-time equivalent specialist teachers at Barnstable United. That would be in the art teacher, PE, health, music, and, yeah, PE and health. We will see a reduction of one full-time equivalent and a grade teacher at Centerville, a reduction of a specialist, .2 specialist at BIS, and a .5 full-time equivalent and administrative assistant in central office. Additionally, as Meg had mentioned, the social-emotional learning priority in the district, we'll be adding a full-time seed coach, and for academic supports, we'll be adding a .5 full-time equivalent special ed teacher and six full-time instructional assistants. The six instructional assistants will be, won't be hired as of September 1st. We will carry those throughout the year as, and bring them on board if, and if needed, but it's anticipation of students coming into the district. So for a total of 7.2 full-time equivalents. In addition, in all of our submissions that we had from our sites, we saw a few reoccurring items from, from year to year. We're, we're taking a look this year and asking for a operating capital line that will be offset by the district's savings account for approximately $570,380 worth of one-time expenditures. The expenditures range from replacement of textbooks to carpet removal, athletic supplies in the form of football helmets, laptops and technology to support the high school's AP, CP engineering courses, personal development through spin bikes, and then a few items in the, through the writing program. Overall, we're looking at a total budget of $70,637,000. That is a 4.05% increase. Without those one-time expenditures of $570,000, we would be looking at a total budget of $70,66,620 or a 3.21% increase. Again, our largest cost center will always be salary and wages. We're a labor-intensive area, netted for step increases, cost of living adjustments, retirement adjustments, and transfers. We'll see $1.3 million worth increase in salary and wages, and then the major staffing changes out, as outlined previously, totaling $339,153. So overall, a FY 19 operating request of $70,637,000 or a 4.05% increase. To fund that budget, we are asking an appropriation of the 60, of $67,59,622, plus an additional $230,306 from our savings account, and the additional $570,380 in the operating capital against the savings account also. To make up the rest of the operating budget, we'll utilize circuit breaker revenue from the state at just over $1.8 million, transportation fees of $225,000, and school choice-receiving revenue of $750,000. If we look at our spending by function, these are the areas or function areas that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education have us report our finances. You can see the, the green shaded areas are all instructional areas that directly benefit or have teachers or staff in front of kids, and typically, you want to see a district have around, that be about 70%, for which we are right there. You can see out-of-district tuition, 10, just over 10%. That includes tuition to out-of-district placements, including the community charter school, and 9.18% for operations maintenance. That would be our Buildings and Grounds Department, including custodians at each site, pupil services, that would include food service, athletics, guidance and testing, and instructional materials. Per pupil expenditure, really, we're hovering right around the state. State average in fiscal year 17, $15,956. Barnstable was $15,630 per student. Few comparisons there, Bourne, DY, Falmouth, Mashpee, Northsett, Provincetown, all around the same area, except for kind of the outliers there who don't have the benefit of economies of scale. Pretty consistent since fiscal year 8, again, hovering right around the state average, again, fiscal year 17, $15,630. Our budget by cost center, no significant increases in any one site. Looking at the total of three point two one percent, this excludes the one-time expenditures. Again, nothing there really, other than cost of living adjustments and step increases through the core departments, with the exceptions of adding the seed coach and the instructional assistants. Again, breaking out by site and function, how we spend the money. Instructional leadership at any one site will make up between five to kind of eight percent. Classroom specialists and, classroom and specialist teachers, you're looking at around sixty to sixty-five percent in each site, followed by other teaching services, which would be instructional assistance or special ed assistance, professional development, guidance and testing, pupil services, operation maintenance. You just kind of see the spread of how we allocate those dollars throughout the district.
This next slide demonstrates how our students did on achievement testing. The slide with the red and the, let's say, navy blue is our performance in grades three through ten in the two thousand and seventeen M-CAS English Language Arts, the percent of students who were meeting or exceeding expectations. You can see that the district, in many cases, is pretty close to the state. That certainly, we like to see that. The slide with the green and the navy blue is the same in terms of students in grades three through ten. In mathematics, the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations at Barnstable is represented by the green bars. The next slide takes sort of a closer view. This is grade three only in English Language Arts. For the blue bars, the green to the right represents math. What we are showing there is in terms of how we are comparing to our like districts that we're surrounded by. So you can see that Barnstable with the red line across, you can see how, again, how we compare in English Language Arts and math. Only showing grade three, we could show you every grade that is tested in this fashion, but again, grade three is certainly critical in terms of the skill sets and the knowledge that our students are acquiring that sort of sets their journey for the rest of their years in the district.
Thank you, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And this is a public hearing, so if any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Counsel discussion on this item. Counsel Dagwan?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the presentation, the School Department. I just wanted to ask a question about the per, the cost per student. I think we said fifteen thousand per student. Is it the same for out-of-district students as it is for in-district students? Are we spending the same kind of?
That is a total cost per student, including all students in Barnstable, so that would include in-district and out-of-district students. It's an average.
Thank you. The other one has to do with the staff. What's the staff ratio now, in terms of new staff and experienced staff? I'm looking at, you know, teachers that may be retiring out, where we are in terms of new teachers coming in. What's the makeup of our system now?
Do we have twelve retirements this year?
So we have a pretty young staff, I guess that's what I'm trying to.
I think, and I'm going to turn to Kristen Harmon, because we made this presentation about a month ago. I want to say, is it about, you were predicting in four or five years, we were going to have a large retirement? Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the presentation. It's very clear and easy to understand. I'm going to zero in on one number that just kind of came out at me was for the football helmets. And the reason I wanted, I just wanted to ask generally, what is the expectation for students participating in athletics to provide their own gear versus the school providing that equipment?
So the football helmets certainly represent, we want equipment for our football players that is certainly preventing concussions, or at least, you know, we're doing what we can to protect them. So that's the upgrade in football helmets. I understand from parents that there's a variety, there's sort of this broad continuum, depending on what sport you're playing, from hockey to soccer, for example, in terms of the difference, the amount of expenses between the two. I would say there's not really a consistent, outside of obviously paying for the athletic fee, we do know that some sports cost more than others for families.
So like hockey, would the students have to pay for their own helmet and gear? I mean, I just didn't know if it, if the sports are treated evenly in terms of what is expected of the student to have to?
I can't speak for hockey. I don't know that, I'll certainly find out, but my sense in terms of speaking with parents is that there's, there's a variety of expectations, and that we don't always provide everything that one would expect.
Counsel Neary?
I have just two questions. The first is, part of the FY nineteen major changes that you've got listed, could you explain to the, at least to me and the rest of the council, what a Chrome Cart is? Because they are just...
So Chrome Books are nice laptops that our students can use. Those Chrome Books go into Chrome Carts. They sort of slide in, and it's a way to charge and store the Chrome Books.
So I've had some experience with, basically, it's a laptop. And hopefully, it's one you can kick and drop and throw around and possibly not break. But just looking at, if I'm reading this correctly, that the K through three costs fifteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars each? And the B H S ones run seventy-eight hundred and sixty-one dollars each? Can that possibly be anywhere in the vicinity of correct? Is that right?
When we talk about carts, we're talking about multiple units within that cart.
Okay.
I can, if I have a moment, I can pull up exactly how many we're purchasing, but this is to supplement our operating budget, technology budget. We have had initiatives in recent years to get to a one-to-one initiative at the high school level, correct?
Yes, and two students to one technology device under high school. We're not there yet, but we're certainly building the capacity to have that, I would say. And I don't want to say we're purchasing technology devices for the, for the purpose of state testing, because that's the wrong reason to do that. We certainly, we certainly want to be providing our students access to technology. We say in many respects, that's their native language, right?
Sure.
Right? But this, our testing is becoming more and more dependent. The state is requiring us to do computer-based testing rather than paper-based testing, so we're making that shift. And in order to have enough devices for all of our students to participate in state testing, we do need to increase the number of devices that we have.
And, you know, obviously, the other fear is that these things kind of become obsolete in a rapid, you know, fashion.
Yes.
So again, this cart is something that houses multiple, I mean, it's the price of an automobile, that's why I'm kind of asking.
So the cart includes the laptops, it's not the cart in and of itself.
Okay. So there may be a hundred laptops in this thing? I mean, it's thirty-three divided into two hundred and fifty-nine thousand is a lot of money?
You gotta come up to the mic. You gotta come up to the mic.
There are thirty laptops in the cart, and I believe that it, we are looking at either twenty-eight to thirty cart, carts with the thirty laptops. So it's a large-scale purchase.
Okay, so thirty times, there's like nine hundred pieces or something like that?
Yeah, plus the cost of the carts.
Phew, thank you, okay. Yeah, put them in a car.
We had to have our math expert come up and explain that to us.
Wow. The only other question that I had, and it just seemed to be a trend, and it's just something maybe, maybe requires more detail in terms of a interpretation, but on the graphs, not only just for grade three that you present, it seems like seven and eight, seventh and eighth grade, in terms of just the trending, seem to fall as a percentage. It's not meeting
Correct.
The state. Do you have a, is there a short or relatively simple explanation of why that may be?
Yes, I can make, I can make a short and simple explanation in terms of, some of the work is around curriculum, right? So our state testing is testing our curriculum, so we have to be sure that there's good alignment between what is tested and what we're teaching. So we're doing some of that work around curriculum maps. So often, when I see a disconnect between sort of how the state is doing and how a district is doing, the first look we have is, is our curriculum aligned to those state standards that are being tested? So some of that work needs to be done, also in terms of making sure that our instruction is targeting the students in the manner that is most effective, and if our students aren't getting that instruction on the first dose of instruction, that we're providing multiple opportunities for students to learn. And we have a little bit more work to do in that area, in terms of providing those multiple doses for students who need it at those grade levels, and we're working on it this year.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good presentation.
Thank you.
And did I understand you just defended your dissertation?
I did, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Job well done.
Thank you.
A couple of quick questions. The graphs are well done, and I noticed that it's really striking that when you look at the number of economically disadvantaged and low-income students, it's basically one out of three of our students fall into that category.
Correct.
It's really pretty dramatic in terms of the role and responsibility that the School Department has to take on in order to really overcome some of those issues and some of those concerns that those, some of those kids bring to the school district. So it's something I think we all have to be cognizant of. As you know, last year, I always ask about school choice and why people are coming in, why people are going out.
Right.
You know, I'm still troubled by the fact that for every student that comes in, we have two that are leaving, and I'm curious about what the net loss is, comparing in terms of what we're sending out as tuition and what we're bringing in. Garrett, you have a number for that?
The general cost for a school choice student's five thousand dollars. You'll notice that in that chart, we also included online schools, which was a new category that was added just about two years ago, and the net cost is six thousand, seven hundred dollars per student. In addition, there's special ed increments that are added to that school choice tuition. So if a student attends a district, an outside district, and they have an I E P, there's an additional charge. I believe the net sending tuition we pay is right around nine hundred and fifty thousand, and we are looking at receiving in about six hundred thousand dollars and change. That does fluctuate based on, again, that special ed increment, how long the student is at each district. They do a partial year calculation that gets reconciled in June.
So if in fact, we could convince those children to stay within the district, we'd be picking up probably another three to four hundred thousand dollars.
Sure. And I have to say, I'm really struck by the competition for students on the Cape, how districts are really going, you know, sort of going after each other's students. Again, that's not, I don't bring that to the table, that's not my interest. I'm interested, as I said in the beginning, to retain the students that we do have. I learned the other day, which I guess this is common knowledge, it wasn't for me, that Northsett actually sends a bus to exit six to pick up students. That just really strikes me as sort of an example of how, what a competitive sort of marketplace exists, that another community would send a bus into our community to collect our students. I just, I'm, I'm...
Sounds to me your superintendent's roundtable needs to have a gentleman and gentlewoman's agreement to not do that. Might be something to put on the agenda. I'm curious also in terms of, in terms of the caseload, grades four to five, it's, you're striving for fifty-three, and six, seven caseload, you strive for a hundred and five. A hundred and five is really high.
Well, it's, so four, five is a team of two teachers.
Got it.
And grades six, seven, a team of four teachers.
Okay, that explains that. I'm also curious in terms of, I didn't see it on the, a line item, but I'm curious with all of the tragedies that we hear about and face relative to school violence, our school safety, our school security monies that we are spending, where is that in the budget? What are we actually expending on that?
Any safety efforts that we have in the school are led by the Barnstable Police Department, and will be, are carried within the police department's operating budget. So it's not a specific line item in the school budget.
It's costing us anything.
It's not costing the school budget anything.
So the equipment that you put in for security purposes, whether it's locks, whether it's cameras, whether it's video, that's all paid for by the police?
No, that's part of our capital improvement plan. You approve some of those costs, Dave has spoken about video surveillance, for example, that's in our C I P. So, and we are in the process of training all employees in Alice. We're sending our principals and a couple of their designees. There was a training in April up in Plymouth, there's another one in July for, at Cape Cod Community College, so that all of our principals and a number of designees will be Alice-certified instructors. All of our staff will participate, teachers, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians, anyone that's involved with our schools, will participate in online Alice training, so that we'll have the whole system trained. We pick up that cost for those types of things. So outside of the school resource officers that are present in our schools, we find ways in the operating budget to continue to improve safety.
Just one final question. When we look at the town as a whole, what percentage of our town residents actually have children in the school district, in our schools?
You had the number at six thousand, but that's not a percentage. Yeah, yeah, no.
The reason I ask is that when I look at the overall spending by function, I look at community services, and I see a line item of zero percent, and I would probably suspect that, you know, out of everyone that's living in the town of Barnstable, it's probably maybe twenty-five to thirty percent of those folks that are impacted by sending children to school.
Sure.
And that leaves probably sixty to maybe seventy-five percent of our community that, based on zero percent for community service, really aren't seeing much, I mean, we all want to support our schools, we all want to spend our taxes, because education is probably the most noble goal that we can achieve, and it's the legacy we leave our children. But at the same time, when you look at the community as a whole, whether it's a senior, whether it's someone younger, whatever the case might be, who does not have children in school.
Yeah.
You know, what's the bang for the buck that they're getting paying for their taxes? So my point would be that somehow, whether it's a community-school activity, whether it's, you know, I, when we had the presentation on the school facilities, you know, it suggested that we would not allow folks to walk around the track during the course of the day. I struggle with that, to be quite frank.
I know.
There has to be a way for the community to want to have buy-in to what it is that the School Department requests, you know, in terms of support, so that they feel they're getting something.
Yeah.
So, you know, I just suggest, because, you know, you'll be back here next year, I'm going to ask you about the number of kids leaving, the number of kids coming in.
Right.
At the same time, I think it's imperative that we take a look at how we can provide services to those folks that might not have children in schools.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Rapkisidi?
Thank you, Mr. President, and if I could just continue on my fellow counselor's concern about that. The annual allocation between the town and the school, the difference between the revenue and fixed expenses, and the split of, currently, it's a sixty, forty split. The schools get sixty, the town gets forty. And I know that's done annually, that agreement. Has that changed? When did that come into being, and has it ever been looked at to change that percentage? Anybody can answer that for me?
That agreement has been in effect since the town and school departments went through consolidation, it was around two thousand and three, two thousand and five. And we have not revisited the exact allocation split since.
However, it is something that's agreed upon on an annual basis. So you do visit it
Correct.
Annually. In speaking with Mark Mill, and the manager, so I think, you know, I'm just looking too at our Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee's report, that perhaps that you should look at other districts and see what their budgets are, and perhaps look at that sixty, forty split going forward. Because the other question I have, have you taken into account, when you predict the enrollment going down the road, that we're at the, a thirty-year low in the birth rate in this country? that we're at the, the, a 30-year low in the birth rate in this country? And I'm sure that's going to have an impact in the schools. So I'm wondering if you have taken that into account? And perhaps, um, in, in thinking about that, uh, going forward for our residents, because our residents are getting older.
Yeah.
They're not getting younger here, um, for, uh, perhaps looking at a more equitable split between town and school source, uh, resources.
So in response to that, uh, two things. One, Cape Cod Collaborative is, um, convening all the Cape superintendents, only superintendents, to meet with, uh, the, and I, I'm just drawing a blank on the gentleman's name, but he's a national expert in demographics, to really do some forecasting with us. Um, I think it will also drive a conversation around some regional planning, um, for school districts, uh, on the Cape. To the point about the 60-40, and, and I, I hear you as a, as a resident of the town as, as well. When I look at the, um, chart in terms of what Barnstable is spending per student compared to other Cape districts, we're, we're certainly, you know, on the lower end of that. I mean, if I take out the districts of Providence, Towne, or Turo, that just don't have enough students. So I feel in terms of, and we also educate probably the most diverse population on the Cape in terms of students who are English language learners, as well as when you look at the students who are, um, coming from economically disadvantaged homes. Those two subgroups of students take a larger amount of resources in order to be sure that we are providing them with the education that they deserve. So, so, uh, uh, certainly we'll engage, you know, certainly open to having those conversations with the town manager on an annual basis. I just get a little anxious when I hear like, resources may be reduced, knowing the population that we educate and the amount of resources that they take, and also looking at that chart in, in, in terms of comparison to see that we, um, we already are on the lower end. And I think in terms of the, um, the achievement data that we present as compared to other Cape districts, we're doing, we're doing well with that money as well, uh, in, in addition to educating a very diverse population.
So if I may, is it because of that, um, the specialized, uh, education, the fact that the student enrollment has pretty much stayed flat
Yes.
since, since, uh, I don't know, 2014? Um, yet the FTEs are, have risen, uh, almost 5%. Is that because of the specialized education?
Yes, if you look at, again, those percentages for English language learners when we started out at 4%, you know, however many years ago, I don't have the slide, uh, precisely in front of me, to now having 10% of our student population where English is not their native language, the amount of resources that takes both in personnel and materials to ensure that they gain English language proficiency, um, while also ensuring that they don't lose anything academically. So we're trying to increase their English language while ma, while increasing their core content, right? Just imagine the amount of resources that takes to be able to do both those things well for those students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Cullen?
Yes, thank you. Um, a couple of comments. Thanks for clarifying the, uh, caseload. I know that my son has two teachers, so, but I didn't know none in, in six, seven. So that's good to know that it's, um, it's four. My concern is and always will be with seventh grade. Seventh grade really concerns me. And you, we see a big drop both in math and in, in ELA, and I know you've said that you're addressing it this year in, in curriculum. Are there any other things we need to be concerned about? It's, because I think you're losing people in seventh grade. I know you are, because I know a lot of moms
Mm-hmm.
and they're leaving
Mm-hmm.
because they're unhappy.
Why are they unhappy?
That, the school, they're very un, unsure about the school, and they're unsure about the instruction at the school, to be frank.
Okay.
And so they're, they're concerned about, some of them about, you know, the, um, it's probably an offline conversation we should actually have, but I think you, you need a microscope at that school and ensure that you have the right direction there. Um, I, I was nervous about four, five, but my son's doing great there. I think it's kind of like a sink or swim, you either sink or you swim, and, you know, either way, you got to figure it out. And it's a much bigger enrollment there than it is in the little, the little elementary schools. So, and they can't even reach the lockers, a lot of them, seriously.
I know.
Um, and, um, we're not a tall family, but we're, we're frisky. But, um, so he, you know, it's, it's just a, it's a whole new world for them. And then you would think they would acclimate better and be ready for six, seven. So something's happening there, and I encourage you to really take a good look at it, because I know a lot of moms that are like, "Yeah, I'm also at the Barnstable."
Okay, thank you.
And, and, um, so I would, you know, maybe if you haven't, I don't know if you do, reach out to the people who have left and say, "Why are you leaving?"
Mm-hmm.
We need to know, so we can fix the problem, and ask them to be frank with you, because most moms with a glass of wine will let it rip. You know? So that's that. And then just to dovetail on what, um, Counselor Flores says, I think we see the value in our youth, I think everyone can see the value in our youth by programs that, that are augmented, um, after school, like the Achievers Program, like the, um, the Youth Commission, the people who are going to the seniors' center to talk to the seniors and ask them about their lives. We're, we're showing value in saving them from not having a college education by picking up the pieces where maybe school can't do everything. I, I'm not a person who relies on school for everything. We have a very integrated existence in my family. But I know a lot of parents are working a ton of jobs and have a really hard time doing that, and they rely on you guys for a lot of stuff. But I think we have, I know I personally have tried to create a safety net for students that are at risk to be able to show that value to our community, if in no other way financially. So if you look at the Achievers Program and where those kids are going and where they could have gone, well, we've saved a lot of money for Barnstable. So I, and we've given these kids a lot of hope. And so I really hope that that message is out there and clear, um, because, you know, there, it could have been a totally different script for those kids.
Totally.
So, um, that's all. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. And if I can just add too, in terms of our, um, because that's such an important program that you describe in terms of helping kids, um, see the connections, stay in school. Our graduation rate data, um, came out just a few months ago, and I, I, you know, I just certainly want to share that Barnstable High School, um, in fiscal year, it's sort of a year behind the way they release it. In fiscal year 16, their graduation rate was 84.6. Um, and in fiscal year 17, it was 87.7. So these efforts, uh, and that's again why I think in terms of the school committee wanting to, uh, increase community partnerships, the things of what you described, we know that helps our kids in terms of the community really wrapping their arms around all of our students and, and doing this work, um, together.
Yeah, and, and I would say that, you know, those are two programs, the Youth Commission and the, and the Achievers Program that came from, from us.
Yeah.
And so if the school committee helps, imagine, we're just going to, phew. So, you know, it's, it's very much a community effort, and, um, and it's, it's, there's constant pressure, and I know that, and I know that the, the English Language Arts thing is a really big thing, and I know that English as a second language is a really big thing. But in the end, we have to think globally about educating our children. We can't parse out who has more needs than the next and all that other stuff. It's about creating a healthier community globally. And I think as long as we're on track thinking that way, we, we can see a really full balance sheet of what all parts of our government do to make a better community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Dagwone?
Um, yes, I just wanted to ask about, um, I noticed that many of our schools are getting more and more students who are autistic. And that, I'm sure, is putting a real, um, a lot on the budget, as well as a lot of pressures on teachers who have to incorporate students with autism uh, into the, to the classroom. And that's where, I mean, they should be when they can be there during the day. So I'm wondering if that's also affecting the, the increase in the budget?
Well, I don't know that it, it, it may indirectly, uh, impact the increase in, in the budget. I mean, we do have, uh, what we refer to as partner classrooms that offer, um, specialized programming for children with autism. And I'm glad that we do, because number one, our children should be educated with their peers. That's the priority. Um, secondly, being able, from a sort of a cost efficiency budget perspective, being able to do that in-house versus sending our students out of district and those higher tuition costs, as well as transportation costs, um, is helpful as well. So I, I, but I do think we, I don't think it's necessarily a strain on the budget, but it's, it's, it's certain...
I think my question was more so, do you see an increase of children?
Yes. Yes, uh, yes, and, and we have the programs to, um, certainly be working with that. But my point was going to be around working with teachers in the general education classroom, which I think you were talking about as well, in terms of making sure they have a skill set, not only for children with autism, but for any child with disabilities, that we're using, um, inclusion practices, that, that all of our children are supported in the general education classroom, that's the goal.
Counselor Flores?
Yeah, just, um, another question. I'm looking at the MCAS data trends
Yes.
as you have presented them. And I'm curious, um, when you begin and you look at grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, uh, they're all hovering around the 50th to 60th percentile. But yet when you get to grade 10, uh, both at the local level as well as the state average, uh, was there something special that happened in 2003, uh, that these kids are basically scoring at the 80th to 90th percentile?
Well, um, I don't think it's a secret. The, the grade 10 test is, um, almost equivalent to the grade eight test. The bar, when they, uh, when the state set the standard, um, I would say that it's not a rigorous test in grade 10. This is why you see the spike, and you know this.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
It's a little misleading, it makes it appear as though, in comparison to the rest of the school system, that these kids are way off the charts, which is not necessarily the case.
Not necessar, and we know even, uh, with these high percentiles, that the number of students we send off to college that still need remediation, this is not a good indicator of college or career readiness, which I think is, again, why the state is moving in a different direction with that, to, to be able to...
Will we be giving the PARC test in the future, or are we going to stay with it?
We're giving it, MCAT, PARC is gone. It was just for good, it was a little experiment, I guess, that the state had. Um, we're in next generation or MCAS 2.0, as we refer to it as superintendents, and so that looks like it's here to stay.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, I'm not trying to, to increase the discussion here, but I think this needs to be said. Uh, we have some good people in the, in the town here who are very interested in our economics. And it's the fact that people decide where they're going to live and where they're going to, uh, work by oftentimes looking at what the school system is in that community. So I think that, uh, we have done an excellent job with our school system to attract people, uh, who professionally come here to take care of us. I think when we look at the aging population, I being one of them, I look at the school kids that came out of the school systems, that now are my doctor, um, my, my lawyer, uh, you know, people who take care of me, it's because you did such a great job getting that basis going. I want to congratulate you on your rising stars. Barnstable is well represented throughout the Cape for our rising stars and their commitment. I also want to just go back a little bit on the security. One of the best things that you have going is your high school, your, uh, house masters.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know for a fact that kids feel really good in our community because somebody in your school system always knows them. No kid is left behind in our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? All those in favor of moving the question? And that is unanimous, this is item 2018-110. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. All right, uh, I want to take a quick break, but before we do that, Vice President Crocker, could you please read 2018-111? Open the public hearing and continue it to June 7th, 2018, please.
Yes, Mr. President, under old business, open a public hearing and continue it to June 7th, 2018-111 appropriation order in the amount of $14,532,512 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Barnstable Police Department budget, as written.
All those in favor of opening and continuing the public hearing on item 2018-111 to June 7th, 2018? And that is unanimous. All right, I want to take a five-minute break, and we'll pick up with DPW orders next. Yeah. All right. We have a quorum. We have a handful of DPW items that we're going to take next, and I'm going to start with, over to my right here, Counselor Hebert. Could you please read item 2018-122 and open the public hearing?
Mr. President, what page is that on?
Page 20.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 2018-122, appropriation order in the amount of $9,691,760 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Department of Public Works general fund budget. This is a public hearing.
Thank you. And Dan, before you get started, if you want to introduce your staff?
I was going to introduce them as I...
Okay.
Through each.
All right.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. And thank you for having us, hosting us this evening for our budget presentation. I will be as brief as I can to move us through this. One of the first things that we do when we sit down every year and start thinking about the budget is what, what is our objective? What are the town council strategic plan? What are we trying to do? Do we have new needs? Can we accomplish those objectives with the resources we have? That's the question one. Can we do it and just level fund that budget? Then are there things that we might want to do that make us more efficient, that provide better or more services? And we'll look at those. And so we'll develop our decision packages that get submitted. This year, I'll start out by saying for the general fund budget and all the enterprise budgets, we are adding no personnel. Our personnel are remaining the same. And all of our fund additions or, you know, the additions are all non-discretionary. There's no discretionary increases in any of the public works budgets this year. So the general fund budget, there are three divisions within the general fund, and administration and technical support, which is primarily where we manage the department from. It's where the section that I work in, the assistant, are surveying, engineering, financial management, capital project planning. So that's there. A representative there, town engineer is here tonight, Paul Graves. If you could wave. All the town engineer representing our administrative and technical support division. Highway division is, supervisor is Michael Perry. Mike's behind me. And the Structures and Grounds Division is Steve Sunderland. Thanks for being here, and they'll be happy to participate if there are any questions that I can't handle. So the highway division within the general fund budget is addressing, obviously, highways. They also manage the fleet maintenance program, all our vehicles. They're dealing with the Osterville drawbridge. They maintain and operate that. And all of our roadside maintenance, our forestry section, litter cleanup on the roadsides, road maintenance, catch basins, sign program. This all comes under the highway division. And the Structures and Grounds Division manages, maintains, and operates our vast resources and infrastructure for buildings, grounds, marinas, parks, beaches, leased properties. That all comes under the Structures and Grounds Division. And I'll leave you to refer to your budget book at your leisure, and you can see the many, many thousands of things that we address every year, day in and day out, from maintenance to emergency services, throughout all of these divisions. It's just a vast operation that we're running, and I'm very proud of all of the people that work at Public Works and the job that they do every single day. So in the general fund budget, the, it is 4.78% of our appropriated funds. If you add in the enterprise funds, and we'll get to those in a minute, but that brings the total to about 12% of the Public Works budget is of the appropriated funds in towns. Now, just on the enterprise fund account, though, those are not general funds. Those are generated by revenue and user fees. So in the general fund budget, these are the three divisions we just spoke of, and this is the breakout of the dollars for the department. And the largest single portion is highway, followed closely behind by Structures and Grounds at 37%, and the administration and technical support, 19%. It's obviously less. It's not necessarily boots on the ground, and we try to put more of our effort in the actual day-to-day, on-the-ground, getting the job done, and that's reflected in that percentage. So this is, looks familiar. This is right out of the budget book, and I've just added highlight to this, and just to summarize that the total proposed appropriation for Public Works Department general fund It is a $254,619 increase over last year, which represents 2.7%, and our full-time equivalent employee number is 84.7. Just briefly on the changes, and as I mentioned, these are non-discretionary, and here's the summary of those changes. $66,073 for personnel costs due to the contractual obligations, $125,000 to the base snow and ice budget. What that means is, in the last two years, we've increased the snow and ice annual budget by $125,000. It was $600,000 for many years, which was really much lower than the actual cost of snow and ice. And it made sense, from a financial position, to start bringing that up slowly to get closer to what we do spend. That way, you're not impacting your next year's budget as much. So that's the purpose of this. This is the second year of doing that. Utilities have increased, and we project increase over the next couple of years, $33,000. Our new fuel contracts for our portion represent $25,000 increase, and $13,200 for uniforms. We have, we are a uniformed department. What we've done in our last contract negotiations with the Barstow Municipal Employees Association is we have them now in uniforms. So it's not just the boots on the ground. It's our engineers and our folks that are out inspecting the roads and doing that work and the surveyors. They now will be wearing uniforms to show their pride and represent out in the community that they work for the Public Works Department. So that's, because it's contractual, that is a non-discretionary item. Our capital outlay, these are every year. We have these capital outlay, and we keep them separate, and we keep, rather than roll it into the budget, because it every, it is every year, they're addressed separately because it's capital. And it's our vehicle replacement fund, $500,000 a year, which is a significant amount of money. We have a pretty vast fleet of equipment, and this is all of our equipment. These are heavy mowers and front-end loaders and trucks, pickup trucks, six-wheelers, dump trucks, the whole, the whole host of those. And we work very closely with our fleet manager, the Assistant Director of Public Works, to manage that program down to every vehicle and what year it's going to be predicted to last. So we try to maximize the value. As I've explained in previous meetings, we buy used vehicles where we can to stretch our dollars. We've done that with the Snowfighters, saved a ton of money. And we have a very rigorous program of vehicle management to where we can really replace our fleet as we need to keep our vehicles efficient and effective at this $500,000 a year level. Building improvements and equipment replacement, $91,000. This is money that's available for major repairs, major equipment, equipment replacement that's below, really, the capital project level. So if a condenser unit goes out on a building's air conditioning system, the money would come out of, come out of this. So it's mostly the HVAC equipment-type purchases that we need for repair work throughout the year. And then finally, $25,000 to maintain town leased properties. There are many leased properties across the town, the horse farm, the Marston Mills Airport, the Maritime Museum. There's a number of leased properties, and these are for expenses that are above and beyond what the leasing is required to pay for. See, these are major things, window replacement, roof replacement, hangar doors at the airport or things like that. So that is the summary of the proposed budget for the general fund for EPW for FY19. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And this is a public hearing, so if any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item. Counsel Beedenbender.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much for that. I just have one question. You were talking about building up your snow and ice budget, and then incrementally you're increasing it. So have you reached where you need to be with this, or is there still, still additional increases coming forward? So I guess, what is the average cost every year to snow and ice removal?
Right now, we've been spending, this year, we spent $1.8 million. Last couple of years, it's been around $2 million. Now, we had a budget of $600,000, so obviously, that's not...
There's a lot of room for growth.
Right. Now, I'm, I'll ask, if you want to know more about it, I'll ask Mark Milne to address it, because I'm not sure what level he's trying to get to. I just know we're trying to get closer to the average of what we spend. And I don't know if that adequately addresses your question. You need a little more.
Yeah, Mark, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Counselors. Mark Milne, Finance Director. As Director Santos mentioned, we've been, we've been averaging about $2 million a year. I'd like to get that budget up to about $1 million and a half dollars a year. I'm comfortable with a deficit of half a million dollars a year. But it's going to take us a few years to get there. So this brings us up to $850,000. About six, seven more years to get there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Any other counselors?
I have a question.
Did you have something, or you wanted to draw that, John?
I don't want to drill down to details, but are we asking questions about some of the things that are listed as projects?
We're just on this one item.
Yeah. Makes it up. I'm just curious about this dog park that I see listed and seems to never be finished. I have a lot of folks calling me and asking me about it.
Sure, understand. I get the calls, too.
Yeah.
The, we've, we've had issues with...
Is that under this budget item, though?
Is it on, was on the section. That's why I'm asking. I don't want to...
Yeah, just on this one item, this one budget item.
General.
Okay. Yeah, general fund. Anything else?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, moving the question. All right. This is item 2018-122. All those in favor of this item? And that's unanimous. Counselor Levesque, could you please read and open the public hearing on item 2018-123 on page 21?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is old business, a public hearing for a majority vote. This is item number 2018-123, appropriation order in the amount of $3,619,890 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Department of Public Works solid waste enterprise fund budget, as written.
Second. Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. As I mentioned just a few moments ago, the enterprise fund budget, this is for all three funds. You can see what percentage of the total appropriated funds that results in, and that's about 7%. And again, that is revenue for the operation of those enterprise accounts that is generated from user fees and charges. Solid Waste Division, here's a breakdown of the budget for the solid waste division by major categories, and you can see that the major portion is operating expenses, and the major portion of that is obviously the disposal of the trash. That's a very significant cost in the, in the operation. And then behind that is personnel and benefits is almost above, well, it is, it's 43% as well for personnel. So those are the lion's share of the cost in the solid waste division budget. Solid Waste, Solid Waste Division has 16.95 full-time equivalent employees. The proposed budget is $3,619,890, which represents a $191,690 increase or 5.57% over fiscal year 18. And those increases are shown here, $42,552 in personnel costs. And again, that's from the contractual obligations that we have to comply with. We've included $135,000 increase in recycling tipping fees. We've talked about this for a past couple of meetings. I know the manager has brought it up. That's a number when we developed the budget last December, we plugged in. It may very well not be enough, and we'll address that later in the fiscal year as more information becomes available or becomes more specific or known as to what, what that amount is going to be. And $11,000 increase in mattress disposal. Mattresses are kind of a nightmare for solid waste. They're big, they're bulky. We actually have a grant, which DEP helps us to get rid of, and they actually recycle mattresses and take parts apart from them and recycle them, but they have to be of a certain, it's like the, it's like all the other recyclables. If it's not clean, it's not good enough, they don't want it. So it's, they're a problem, and they're getting very costly to get rid of. So that's the increase there. That's all I have as far as solid waste. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dan. And this is a public hearing, so if any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Counsel discussion on this item. Counsel Beedenbender.
Thank you, Mr. President. So you mentioned that dumping essentially takes, operating cost is 43%, and I remember you talking to this counsel about, you know, increases in recycling fees, dumping fees, all that kind of stuff. And, and I know that you were talking about exploring new options for us, and just curious where we're at in those conversations, or if you have some, if you have a path forward.
One of, one of the options, I think, that was mentioned last time, was the possibility of getting a waiver to allow communities to basically landfill the recycling, because there is a state waste ban. You're not allowed to do that. And we looked into that further, and basically, they're not, we wouldn't qualify for a waiver. This is a very extreme condition where there is no other option. They let communities do this for 30 or 60 days, so that's not an option. We're still looking at the options. There aren't many, and every week, if you read the newspaper, they're getting fewer and fewer. We've seen that. New Bedford Waste, our contractor, basically five towns, they increased the, the fee to those five towns, and now they're embroiled in a battle over that because they had fixed-price contracts for recycling, and they're still trying to raise the cost, calling it a, you know, uncontrolled condition, whereas they're, they're trying to get increases due to something beyond their control or anyone could know about. We're not involved in that because our contract was three years, free recycling, subject to relooking at it. So after relooking at it, that's when they came in for the increases, and also an unwillingness to set a price. So they're, they'll do it month to month and basically pass that charge on to us. And it actually has been holding steady for the past few months, but that's been at $90 a ton, over $0 a ton before, and our solid, and our municipal trash is $55 a ton. So it's almost twice as much... So it's almost twice as much to get rid of recycling right now than it is to get rid of trash. So this is, this is a problem facing every community, it's facing every state, it's a national problem, and I don't think we've seen the last of it. And we've all got to deal with it. Right now, the best way to deal with it is, hopefully, the price stays relatively stable and that we can afford it. But we are, through PJ Kelleher, and I wanted to mention, he's the supervisor, sorry about that. PJ is looking at every possible option for us doing it ourselves, for contingency planning, if New Bedford Waste says, "We're just not taking it anymore," which is a possibility. So we have to look at all those things. So we do continue to do that. And I don't see any resolution in the real near future, unfortunately.
One follow-up question. Is there, is there a reasonable potential that we might need to put some fees on recycling? Because right now, the sticker's free, I believe, right? Recycling, you can just recycle for nothing.
Yes, the town ordinance provides for free recycling to all residents. So if there was going to be any change to that, we'd have to go through that ordinance process.
Thank you.
Counselor Rapp Grissette?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will say your department heads look handsome in their suits. It's nice to see everybody out. How many free stickers are issued for recycling?
I think about 3,000.
So 3,700, which are free stickers, and they don't deliver trash or bring trash, they only bring recycled.
Yes.
So I think, to follow up, Counselor Beedenbender, and I think I mentioned this at the last, when you were looking for the supplemental appropriation to cover the cost, I think I said, "We need to look at that regulation and change it," I think. I don't think we should be offering free recycling when it's costing us that much. And I am wondering if you're starting, if the word's getting out that it costs nearly $100 a ton to take away recycling, as opposed to 55 on the trash, are you seeing more trash thrown in, and people are saying, "Well, maybe I should save the town some money and just throw it right in the trash"? Are you seeing that, or...
We haven't seen that yet, and I'm, we haven't seen that yet in our numbers, not, not to the extent that you can...
You don't see an extra, more tonnage coming out?
No. And I can't really, I can't comment on whether or not people should do that.
No, I know, I know, you're not supposed to, and, you know, I know Nantucket, you have to throw it away in clear bags so they can inspect it. But I think that that's, that's a discussion we need to take. If we've got those, that many people going in and throwing off their stuff, and we're paying it for those that buy a dumpster or a transfer sticker, I'm concerned about that, so.
The manager's here, and I'm sure he'll be talking to me in turn a while about how we'll, how we may bring something like that forward.
Thank you.
We'll be happy to provide the numbers necessary to support whatever direction you want to take.
Any other counselors? Counsel Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Dan. Is ABC the same as New Bedford?
Yes.
Okay.
One is the transportation arm of...
And I know that they're having a lot of difficulties in New Bedford and Dartmouth with that. So we also have to remember that when we talk about recycling, that the state is our partner in this, one way or the other. So if they didn't realize that a community was discouraging recycling and putting it more in their waste, we're going to get visited by the DEP, the state's going to come down on us. One of the things that I think we, partly education, our waste and our recycling has a lot to do with our lifestyle. So when the, like newspapers, if we do just newspaper, do we get a better deal on that? Because there's more value to the newspaper or just cardboard?
Just cardboard.
Just cardboard is the only one that we're getting any kind of a break on?
Yes.
So the other thing I'm just going to say for public, and it's a little self-serving, but I've been at it for a long time now. So the nickel deposits, so when, when I go, doesn't matter which transfer station, I do a lot of business with Yarmouth, when I still look into the mixed, commingled, I'm seeing beer bottles with a nickel deposit. If the people would take just one minute and bring it over and give it to the charity that's working at the transfer station, then that does not cost our town any money. It saves our town money, because the whole process of redemption, getting the nickel back, keeps it in our community, helps the nonprofit, but helps the town. So in the transfer stations that I deal with, we save thousands of dollars a year to the towns when we go and get those beer bottles out of their systems. So I just would like the public to help themselves. If we want to keep our rates down, we have to look at how we're disposing of things. So we throw the plastic, the aluminum, and the glass that has the deposit into our waste system, into our recycling bin, there's no need to do it, it's just costing more money.
I've asked PJ Kelleher to develop educational program. What kind of things can we be saying, and how and where to do exactly what you're talking about? So the answer really is to not bring things to the transfer station. That's how you save money. And so there are things, the way you purchase, what you do with food scraps, there are lots of ways to bring less to the transfer station. So that really has to be the focus of our education, in the short and long term, I think. And I'm working with PJ, and we'll be sharing that with the manager, some of the ideas he has there.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Vice President Crocker?
I, I believe that we're going to have discussions over the year about how we look at the whole operations with PJ at the helm, because I think you're bumping up against the very limit of the value that the consumer is seeing as a value for the service received at the DPW. So all these issues are really difficult to solve, because we want to keep the morality of recycling. But we know if we just simply threw it in the garbage, we could cut it in half for dollars. So maybe we give everybody a tree to take home, and we throw it away. So I don't know what it is, but we're going to have to really face this question, because it's one of the most discussed issues in my community that I hear about, especially around sticker time, about where the sticker prices are going. Everybody remembers the 18-month move there, and then we never went back, and we haven't stopped since. So you're really up against it, and we look forward to working this problem out with you. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
I have a question.
All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item 2018-123. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Dagewan, could you please read item 2018-124 and open the public hearing?
Hey, Mr. President. Item 2018-124, appropriation order in the amount of $4,744,584 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Department of Public Works Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund budget. And this should be open for a public hearing and a majority vote.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. Andy Boulay is the supervisor, and he's here tonight. Thank you, Andy. Water Pollution Control Division operates our main wastewater treatment plant on Berstis Way behind the DPW operation. They also operate a plant out at the West Villages School there, which handles the school wastewater, as well as several housing units that are nearby. I think there's 30 housing units there. And they also have a treatment plant at Red Lily Pond, which is basically a large septic system that we manage. As you know, through the capital program over the last couple of months, we have put some significant resources into wastewater, and we'll be hearing more and more from the Water Pollution Control Division and about them in the coming months and years and years as we start wrestling with the, managing our wastewater in the town of Barnstable and throughout the Cape, as well as our, working with our neighboring communities on the very issue. Here's our breakdown. Once again, very similar to in the solid waste, where our operating expenses and personnel and benefits, you know, take up the lion's share of the program. Debt service is a little larger here, primarily because we've got a very expensive operation that's, that's cost a significant amount of money over the years, and this is, are paying back those bonds. 15.35 full-time equivalents in the Water Pollution Control Division. Proposed budget is $4,744,584. A $143,200, $323 increase over fiscal year 18, which is 3.11%. The increases there are shown here, 81,900 resulting from personnel contractual obligations, 40,000 for SCADA. SCADA is our computer operating system, which allows us to operate our equipment remotely, both in and away from the plant. We have pump stations and systems throughout town. This is how it all communicates. That system is out of date, the current software is unsupported, and we don't have redundancy. This, this is really necessary. And in our opinion, this is actually, this is non-discretionary, because without that system, we're not able to operate efficiently to meet our permit requirements. $5,000 increase in our pump station budget. We're adding a new pump station. This is to do with the Cape Cod Five, new corporate center on Route 132. They are building that pump station at their expense. They're going to turn it over to us for operation, and this is the maintenance cost for that when that comes online. The $90,000 is our annual capital outlay, similar to in the general fund. This is funds that are available for equipment that breaks down during the year that needs to be replaced, pumps, motors, valves, things like that. This provides the funds for that. And then finally, $32,000 to replace a generator at the Marx Path Pump Station, which is beyond its useful life and needs to be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Okay.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item. Counsel Rapp Grissette?
I have one question about the SCADA. Is that system-wide, you're updating it? So there's already a system in place?
Yes.
And you're just updating the software?
Yes, correct.
Because that seems like cheap money compared to whether...
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Counsel Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, just a snapshot, I know we're looking at the future, but looking at the expenses in the future, what does the future look like for the plant, our plant itself? And is there new technology that's coming our way that, for instance, we, earlier in public comment, there was the concern about water being added to a pond. Is it the technology that's coming forward that we're going to be able to actually take wastewater and reduce it to, back to drinkable water practically? Is that coming? And I believe that when the base talked last week, they were taking groundwater and sending it through a system and coming out, I wouldn't say pristine, but in a way that wouldn't add, and I know you were part of that.
Right, but we actually do that.
We do that, okay.
Sure, with our water supply system. We're doing that very same thing they're doing there. It's pump and treat, taking the contaminated groundwater, stripping out the contaminants, and putting it into the water system. That's really where all drinking water is going to end up eventually, if not already. In most parts of the country, they're, they're doing that. They drink out of the Mississippi River. Some wastewater dumps in on one area, and they're taking it out on another. This is just, so treatment technology clearly can do what you're talking about.
Okay.
The question on a wastewater treatment plant, those technologies are old, they've been around for a long time, they work. I think we tweak our system is what we do. And in the future, yes, we're going to have to improve the plant, we're going to have to upgrade the plant to meet new standards for new contaminants, these emerging contaminants that are coming out, higher standards that the DEP puts on us. So we will be modifying that plant to meet those standards. The plant may have to grow to meet increased wastewater that's coming in from being collected in other parts of the town, where our wastewater plan suggests we need to remove nutrients, so we need to provide treatment that's better for our water supply. And then, then finally, we've talked about effluent disposal, and you heard about it tonight, because we're starting to look at, what are our opportunities for effluent disposal? If we can't put it all here at the treatment plant, where are we going to put it? So that's, you know, there's the treatment part, but then there's the what do you do with it part. So that's, we're looking at the whole universe of options there. So looking at the feels is an appropriate thing to look at. Now, they may be absolutely right, that high groundwater there, and there is high groundwater there, would prohibit you from putting any large amount of effluent there. But we've got to look at it. We don't want to just, you know, ignore it out of hand. And we'll look at, you know, as the manager asked me, look at, look at the parking lots throughout town. When we reconstruct the parking lot, is that an appropriate place for effluent disposal? So we've got a capital project that you approved that's, that's looking at all these things. So as a long answer to your question, yes, there'll be plant improvements, plant expansions for both treatment and effluent disposal.
But we should start looking for the budget in the next five to 10 years. There's going to be some pretty large expenditures. Is that correct?
Absolutely, and we'll be planning that along with the whole collection system. And as we bring more wastewater in, we're not going to bring it in unless we've got a place and a way to deal with it. So they go hand in hand.
Thank you, Dan.
Any other counselors? Vice President Crocker?
Thank you for the discussion, and thank you for discussing what came out in public comment. I know that the chair of the school committee is discussing putting together a group to have the very discussion that we had, which is probably why a number of us avoided it. But I think what the point is that you brought up is very illuminating and very clear, and that is that you have to go through a series of tests before you can discharge anywhere. These aren't, these aren't willy-nilly, these aren't put the pipes in, and let's hope nothing goes wrong and the baseball field floats away. I mean, we're really have to go through quite a series of hoops with DEP before you can...
Yes, very rigorous.
And secondly, you're discharging very clean water...
Yes.
...by the time it gets to that location. So thank you for the clarifications.
Sure. Any other counselors?
I have a question.
All those in favor moving the question? This is item 2018-124. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Flores, could you please read item 2018-125 and open the public hearing?
This is old business, a public hearing by majority vote. Item number 2018-125, appropriation order in the amount of $6,353,929 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Department of Public Works Water Supply Enterprise Fund budget, as written.
Go ahead, Dan. Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, Hans Kaiser's here tonight. He's our water supply supervisor. Thanks, Hans. This photograph here is a couple of our activated carbon treatment units out along Mary Dunn Road treating the PFOS contamination from the firefighter training academy. We have four, we have four of those in operation as we speak. Water supply budget, operating expenses 59% in large year, and the reason for that is, basically, this is a contractor operation. So this is not town employees. We have a long-term contract with Suez, which operates water systems throughout the world, frankly, and they've, they've been doing a great job for us. They're in a long-term contract. We'll be renegotiating next year, the next five-year block. It's ultimately a 20-year contract. And the personnel budget here is small, it's 5%, as you can see. The other debt service is large, again, on these large infrastructure-heavy type of operations, we have to finance those things, and so we have, you know, debt service. But our rates and our rate structure is such that it can support the payment of our debt service. Also mentioned, associated with that, every year, we use municipal financial consultants to look at our operations and look at our rate structures, and look at what we should be charging to manage our debt service, to make sure we have cash reserves. So that's a very complex modeling that we go through, and we work closely with the Finance Director on that, part of our rate-setting process. So the budget requests proposed... So the budget requests proposed, six million, three hundred fifty-three thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars. That's a four hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollar reduction, or six point four-two percent reduction over last year, and you can see two point nine five FTEs. That's basically Hans and his administrative assistant, and then the portion of people in the engineering, myself, part of our salaries are allotted to that operation because we assist and participate in the management. And you can see here that eighty-one thousand, this is our Suez contract obligation every year, we, there's a, there's a increase to the contract that's built in, and so this is the amount for next year. And the hundred sixty-six thousand capital outlay, this is, the hundred and sixty thousand of that is our annual capital outlay. Again, like the other enterprise accounts, we have equipment, and this covers our emergency repairs, things that break, things that are above and beyond the contract with Suez. And we're adding six thousand dollars for police details. We've been finding that, the work we've been doing the last few years, we've been exceeding that budget, and we need to beef that up a little bit, because every time we're working out on the roadways, particularly on the busy roads, we have to have a police detail, and that costs us money, and we just need to catch up with that. And that concludes Water Supply Division.
Thank you, Dan. And this is a public hearing, so if any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item. Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dan. Just a quick question. I like your tagline that, besides air, there's nothing more important than water. I don't know who came up with it, but it's a truism for sure.
Yeah.
I'm curious, the pictures in the operating budget book that show the carbon filters, as emerging contaminants get more and more discovered, as those levels that were once acceptable get lowered so that they're now no longer acceptable, does the filtering system that we invested millions of dollars in over the past year, year and a half, will they be able to control those new contaminants, whether the PFOs or PFAs, whatever the case might be? Or, you know, what is the level of these filters?
If it's the same contamination, if it's the perfluorinated compounds, and they reduce the level, so yes, it will treat for it. What happens is there's carbon in these units, and the carbons absorb the contaminant, and it holds onto it, and then the clean water goes out. So what you'll end up having to do is change that carbon more frequently. So, well, we might have to do it once a year now, or twice a year. You might have to do it twice a year, or three times a year, or every month. And then you get to a point where it's more economical, in fact, to put another unit in. That's if it's the same contaminant. Now, if other emerging contaminants, the EPA decides that something, I don't know, another contaminant is now an issue, and they issue another health advisory, it may or may not be able to be treated by a carbon system. Just turns out that the perfluorinated compounds can be treated by carbon, which is a very basic treatment system, kind of like in your pool filter or your aquarium. It's the exact same thing. But we have, for example, one for dioxane. That's another emergent contaminant, which is throughout the system, much more difficult to deal with, much higher level of treatment, different equipments, oxidation, and ultraviolet light, and obviously more cost. So this is the real dilemma for water systems, is knowing where the regulatory agencies are going with what contaminants and what levels, and then marrying that up with treatment plants and treatment systems that are going to be able to provide clean water and treat those things. So it's, it's not an easy question to answer, but again, if it's perfluorinated and the levels are just lower, yes, we'll be able to handle it. It's just going to be more changeouts of the carbon.
I think it's important that as part of your overall strategic plan, that obviously you're aware of that this might be a possibility down the road, and that there is some kind of contingency, perhaps not from a financial perspective in the immediate, but a long-term, you as the director and the department as a whole, you know, have to be ready to step forward to say, we have to have a plan in place, X, Y, and Z, sort of like an emergency kind of a response plan.
And we have been working on that. I am just getting the review copy of our overall system, new source plan, and that addresses where we need to get water from in the future, what level of treatment, where that treatment should go on. This is a comprehensive planning document, doing exactly what you're suggesting. Thank you. We will share that with you soon.
Any other counselors? Counselor Neary?
Just one quick question, Dan. Suez, you said it was a twenty-year contract?
Yes, it's five years.
Broken into a five-year increase?
Yes.
And it's an eighty-one thousand dollar increase this year, or this, maybe this level?
For the year.
Yeah, okay. Is it, how far are we into that now?
We're in our ninth year.
Ninth year, okay. Is it generally, is it a percentage-based increase annually?
Yes, based on consumer index, or, and I might forget exactly what it is, but it's in the contract what it's based on.
It's tied to something. So would it generally be, as a rough number, will it be about another eighty thousand?
Yeah, it's in that neighborhood.
Every year?
Yeah.
So we'll have to obviously plan on additional funding over the ten years another?
Well, our, our financial plan and our analysis looks ahead, and it includes that every year, you know, approximately what it will be, and it gets tweaked during the year. But we're definitely planning for that in our rate structure.
Sure, so the twenty, another ten years is another eight hundred thousand dollars more based on today's...
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Vice President Crocker?
On enterprise accounts, people forget we just move money from selling our product to pay to produce the product the next year. How are we doing in projecting our sales of water? Water fluctuates like not too many other products. How are we doing with our forecasting over the last...
Very well. We usually, we're conservative about it, so we usually come in, we have, you know, more, more sales and revenue from the water supply, but that's, we want to be in that place. We want to be conservative, and I think we're very good at forecasting that. We've been doing it now since two thousand and five, and Hans does a great job, and we understand our users and the kind of water that they use.
And what are we trying to add on top of the true cost of delivering water? What are we trying to add to our reserves to catch up with some of this delayed and deferred maintenance?
Well, right now, we have been dipping into the reserves because of the contamination issue, and our long-term forecasting, we start to build that back up. So we're getting to a low point, but our plan ahead is to build that back up.
Thank you. Very important issue for you as you go forward. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Move the question.
All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item twenty-eighteen dash one twenty-five. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. All right, I think we've got one more item with you, Dan. Counselor Wallace, could you please read and open the public hearing on item twenty-eighteen dash one forty? It's on page thirty-eight or thirty-nine.
This is all business, open for a public hearing. Item number twenty-eighteen dash one forty appropriation and loan order of forty thousand dollars pursuant to temporary repair to private roads program regarding Locust Lane in Barnstable. Two, roll call, two-thirds required, Mr. President?
Thank you. Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. Under home rule legislation, the town is authorized to expend funds to repair private roads. Under this program, the abutters to roads being repaired can be charged betterment assessments for one hundred percent of the actual costs of repairs, which they can elect to pay in one lump sum, or over a period of up to twenty years. This road will not be taken by the town after repairs are made. The majority of the private property abutters to Locust Lane in Barnstable have expressed an interest in having repairs made to their private road, and fifty-five percent of the abutters have signed a consent and acknowledgement agreement for betterment assessment. The proposed work on Locust Lane is the removal and replacement of the existing pavement and installation of some drainage structures. The cost of improvements is estimated at forty thousand dollars with a cost per abutter. There are twenty abutters at two thousand dollars per abutter, not to exceed that amount. There's no cost to the town for this program. All costs will be recovered by betterment assessed on the abutters, and the town will issue a bond to cover the cost of repairs and use the revenues collected to repay the bond. Thank you.
Thank you, and this is a public hearing, so if any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item. Counsel Schnepp?
Mr. President, Dan, what constitutes temporary repairs? Is this like a five-year fix, or is it a...
Fifteen years.
Fifteen for temporary?
It's defined.
Okay, thanks.
Any other counselors?
Move the question.
All those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous. This is item twenty-eighteen dash one four zero. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Counselors, Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker, James?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagewine?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnepp?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Bobbyus?
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your support tonight.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you and all of your staff. All right, we're going to go back. Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please read and open the public hearing on item twenty-eighteen dash one-one-two, please?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a public hearing under all business, Planning and Development Department. Item twenty-eighteen one-one-two appropriation order in the amount of one million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year twenty-nineteen Planning and Development Department budget.
Go to the second. We have our Director of Planning and Development, Elizabeth Jenkins, welcome.
Thank you, President. Counselors, good evening. Nice to see you again. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. It's my pleasure for a second year in a row to be able to come up and introduce you to the new and improved Planning and Development Department as a result of the recently approved restructuring. Planning and Development now is comprised of six programs, the new addition being the Conservation and Parking Management Programs. Our focus is to work in an interdisciplinary fashion to meet the town's goals and priorities, specifically around economic development, housing, preservation and protection, and efficient use of all of our natural resources and infrastructure. So this is our budget request before you this evening, just highlighting some significant changes this year. We, the budget does represent an eleven percent increase with some additional personnel changes, again, happening as a result of the restructuring, two new FTEs really, an Assistant Director and an Economic Development Coordinator position. I'll note that our operating expenses are level funded, they're actually decreased by a little, by a little bit. And we do have two capital outlays related to lakes and ponds management in our conservation program. I'll take you very briefly through our accomplishments in fiscal year eighteen, and then looking forward to fiscal year nineteen, at what, how we hope to move forward. So again, focusing around Town Council strategic planning priorities and economic development housing, we had an excellent year supporting our priority growth areas specifically around Route one thirty-two, a number of these great projects and collaborations with other departments you've heard about tonight. We supported, I'd like to just note on this slide, we supported six development of regional impact reviews. Those six projects alone, I think, represent a potential increase in eighty-five million dollars of value for the town of Barnstable. We have a seventh in the works as well, that you see down there. It's great to support the big guys, but about seventy-five percent of our businesses, in our estimation, in the town of Barnstable are small businesses, so we really focus on business outreach and support, customer service for businesses that are interfacing with the town of Barnstable's regulatory programs, so we've provided new guides and resources. This year, we also achieved permanent designation of the downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone and updated, almost completed update to our Open and Space and Recreation Plan. We've done aggressive implementation of our housing production plan. I'll note that this year, in the Growth Incentive Zone, we have a hundred and forty units that were either permitted or in permitting. That represents more than what we did in the last ten years combined, so excellent housing production this year, especially in the Growth Incentive Zone. Mark talked earlier about, made a great announcement about our new participation in the Governor's Housing Choice Program, so that'll be a great opportunity to move additional initiatives forward. Supporting our creative economy is core to our economic development program here. We expanded our Artist Shanties Program. Hopefully, you'll visit the three new shanties that are here on the overlook. They're a great additional, addition to our program. We also continued our planning with renewing our High Arts Cultural District, and it's great to be able to integrate some of the greeter programs with our arts and culture as well, started to discover Barnstable and task, and opening that Welcome Center. Conservation, great work in their three kind of areas, wetlands, wetland protection, lakes and ponds management, and land management, a number of great efforts keeping our water quality up, cleaning up our beaches, as well as managing our conservation areas. Our parking management program, really, again, focusing around customer service and improving the parking experience for residents and visitors, so important, especially in a seasonal economy here. So made some great strides in terms of improving the parking experience, working with the Disability Commission around ADA parking as well. We also continue outreach to all seven of our villages in the town of Barnstable, including working with DPW on streetscape projects as well as rezoning efforts. And proudly, I think one of the great things we did accomplish in FY eighteen was really reaching out to the community, especially our partners here in housing, economic development, and resource protection with the town of Barnstable, forming new partnerships, leveraging our resources here in the town of Barnstable, and being able to support some great new initiatives going forward. So just quickly, looking forward to fiscal year nineteen, again, focusing primarily around economic development, housing, and resource protection. We look forward to continued implementation of the Hyannis Parking Study, especially now with integration of the parking program and growth management. We think that this is a great time to kind of pick up that effort. I think really it's hard to get excited about parking, but I think dealing with the parking issues in downtown Hyannis is going to be a great way to unlock additional economic opportunity. Again, you were kind enough to take, take a chance to meet Peter Lent, our new Economic Development Coordinator, who introduced you to that new Opportunities Analysis SWAT Program that we hope to debut here in the next few months, as well as continuing outreach to our small businesses, business development outreach and support tools, and other economic development efforts. Again, we hope to continue with aggressive implementation of our housing production program, particularly this year, I think, based on kind of feedback that we've gotten from the council and planning board, really taking a close look at housing zoning within the Growth Incentive Zone. We're looking at opportunities to leverage our resources to do that as well. Planning, refocusing around climate change and hazard mitigation, that's always been something that this, this department has done. A number of good opportunities to do that going forward, again, working in support of DPW projects as well. Parking, really, I think this year, we'd like to look at opportunities to integrate technology into our parking program to make that more efficient, and continue with efforts to improve the customer service orientation of that program. And finally, in conservation, continue work to restore and restore and improve the health of our lakes and ponds, both for their aesthetic and recreation value is so important here in the, in the town of Barnstable. Focusing on land management of our existing, of our existing properties as well. These are our two capital outlay projects, invasive weed control in Waukegan Lake and invasive weed control in Long Pond, Mystic and Middle Pond in Marston's Mills. And finally, we'll, as always, we'll continue with our Regulatory Review Program, which serves all these boards, committees, and commissions in the town of Barnstable. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. And this is a public hearing, so if there are any members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Counsel discussion on this item. Counsel Rap Grissette?
Thank you, Mr. President. So you're wearing a new hat. You've got conservation under you now. I see there's hydrola control and fanwark control, no cyanobacteria?
Yes, so we do that as well. That, that's a collaboration we have with the Health Division. There's not a specific capital outlay for that, but that is part of our lakes and ponds management program done by our existing staff to manage that, those toxic allergies.
You're going to continue to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Flores?
Thank you, good presentation. I'm just curious...
Thank you. Good presentation. I'm just curious, the two positions that you listed, the Economic Development Coordinator, as well as the Assistant Director of Planning and Development, are those two newly created positions?
That's correct.
Okay.
They're both two new FTEs, yeah.
And we've filled one, but not the other?
They will both be filled by existing personnel.
By existing, okay. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counsel Schnep?
Thank you. I had a question on the Community CDBG program. Is that, I don't see it anywhere in the budget. Is that...
Because that's a federal grant.
Okay.
So we get about $280,000 to $300,000 annually
Okay.
From a federally funded Community Development Block Grant. That funds our coordinator position as well. That's why you don't see her in our FTEs either, because that is, again, a reoccurring federally funded grant.
Okay.
That certainly, we do some great things with, but at no cost to the town.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other counselors? Counsel Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. I said to myself, oh, don't bring up parking, don't bring up parking. And then it came on the screen, and I said, oh, God.
All right.
So you are not on the oath, but so, do we do any business really right now with mass development?
So this is interesting. So mass development, we are actually about to kick off our first initiative with mass development. We had applied. Mass development's always been around, and certainly, we've always been connected with them. But they're kind of refocusing down on the South Shore and the Cape as well, knowing that they haven't really explored opportunities here in the past. We applied for a great program, Transformative Development Initiative, to look at supporting our revitalization program in downtown Hyannis. We unfortunately weren't selected for that program, but I think through the relationships that we built through that application process, they have offered us $50,000 in technical assistance to support specifically revitalization around the east end of Hyannis. So we're actually gonna kick that kind of scope off with them on Tuesday. So that'll be kind of a first step in looking at that collaboration. And, you know, we always work with them in terms of our Economic Development Program trying to function as that one-stop shop for businesses and developers who are looking to do business in the town of Barnstable. They have some great financing programs. So, you know, just educating businesses and others here about the services they provide is something that we're trying to do now as well.
So that's awesome. So going back to the parking, do you see in the future, I know the study said that we had enough parking spaces. I don't think the people who did the study ever come here on a regular basis, because this week, I was at Town Hall, and I could not find a parking space. I ended up across the street, which was fine. But so do you ever see a parking, high-rise parking, several levels, or is that only something that might happen at the transportation center?
So a parking structure. So what the study said is that even at the peak of the peak, July 4th weekend, 50% of all of our parking spaces in downtown Hyannis are open. So we have parking. It's just not necessarily where people want to be. The kind of core activity areas, you know, this block of Main Street, Hyannis Harbor, those are the locations where people really want to park. And those parking spaces are always full. So what the parking study recommended was that prior to making a major capital investment in a parking structure, that we look at implementing parking demand management, or essentially pay-for-parking, trying to manage that market demand through pay-for-parking. So, you know, that's gonna be, I think, the first conversation that we'd like to have with our resident and business community. Personally, I don't think that demand-based parking, paid parking will ever work unless you can address walkability as well, because frankly, people are not gonna park at more remote locations and walk to their destination if they're not comfortable, if they don't feel safe and comfortable. So when we go into the community, I think we have to talk about walkability in addition to talking about parking for this to be a starter in our community. So hopefully, within the next, really, I'd like to say, the next month, we'd like to start with this conversation, at least try a demand-based approach. And then, you know, if we're not finding that that's accomplishing the goals of our parking program, you know, I like to think of parking as really a service to our residents and visitors. So if you feel like it's not accomplishing that goal, then we could go back and reevaluate. You know, the other aspect of parking is that land values in downtown Hyannis are very high. So, you know, parking, I feel like every time we bring a housing project forward, we end up having a conversation about parking. So if we're gonna generate additional economic activity, if we're gonna allow for an increase in density of our housing units, which are so key to downtown revitalization, we have to think about ways that we can, you know, not necessarily take parking out of the equation, but help balance it as well. So, you know, I think structured parking is an interesting way to think about that. And I really do think addressing parking issues is a key to unlocking economic activity.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counsel Flores?
Regarding Mass Works, I know in the past, we probably have not pursued them as much as we probably should have. So I commend you and your department for creating that relationship. We have friends at that department, both at the local level as well as at the state level through the Cabinet Secretary. I think we all know Maria Marasco. She does a great job for us. And I know that I converse with her pretty much on a regular basis about opportunities that might be able to come our way. So I think even now, sometimes, we're leaving money on the table that we should probably be pursuing. So I encourage you strongly to develop that rapport and develop that relationship. Not that you're not doing it, but even more, I think there's money there for us.
Yeah, we talk to Maria all the time. And certainly, being a gateway city allows us to leverage a lot of those state funds. I mean, that's really a key selling point for us. And, you know, educating developers and businesses about those opportunities. And, you know, it's really Maria that unlocks those opportunities for folks.
Right.
So we talk to her regularly. The Mass Works grant was fantastic, $3.75 million for, you know, I think, key improvements in that area. So, yeah, we look forward to doing that.
She does have keys to that little bank vault that they control, so we should take advantage of it.
Any other counselors? Counsel Schnep?
Quick question on housing. You had mentioned there were 140 new units projected, right?
Well, either that have been permitted or that are currently in the permitting process.
And of those, how many would be considered affordable?
That's a good question. That's a good question. I don't have the number, but I can get back to you.
Okay. Because I have a feeling, I mean, it's great to have that new housing, and then that's just in the giz, right?
That is just in the giz. So that's not counting the 265 new senior units, the, you know, 120 new units in the Village Green, and the 33 new units in the industrial parks. So that's, I mean, that's a huge amount of housing production
Right.
In the last two years.
Right. And the Village Green is affordable, so that's commendable.
Correct, yeah.
But I think we really do need to put a priority in trying to make sure that we have other housing options in the rest of our town and the other villages.
In all seven villages, absolutely. So, thank you.
All right. We're hitting 11 o'clock, so I gotta make a motion to go past 11. Do I have a motion to go past 11?
They're moved.
All those in favor going past 11 o'clock? And that's unanimous. Okay. Counsel Flores?
No, I was just gonna comment, following up on Counselor Schnep's comment about affordable housing. I think, you know, the new development that's going up on Independence Drive, that's about a 365-unit facility. I know this is going to be, you know, obviously, 10% of it will be affordable. So there's 36 new units. And then the facility that Joe Keller is building on the corner of Mary Dunn in Independence, there's, I believe, 29 units going there. So there'll be three affordable. So
Correct.
You know, I think we're following it as probably as best we can and as closely as we can. I know that affordable housing is very important to me. And even when we approved the Seaport project with Bob Brennan, you know, I was concerned that we were sort of below the level that we should have been. But I think, you know, the alternative of actually correcting what's going on down there, I think probably outweighs the fact that we wound up with two as opposed to three. But it's important that we make sure that we really maintain the integrity of what our rules are, which is basically for every 10, you know, we put one out.
So 10%, so both the Keller project and the Senior Care Project complied with the 10% inclusionary affordable ordinance, which we have. The Sea Captain's Row, you know, only two out of six, but really responding to the housing needs assessment that said we did have to rebalance and create more market rate units in downtown Hyannis. You know, it's actually neighbors to a number of public housing projects right there. So it was about balance. You're right.
Counsel Rapgrassetti? All those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous. This is item 2018-112. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you, Elizabeth. I'm gonna skip ahead just a little bit to item 2018-117. I want to invite Dan Horn up. Counselor Beedenbender, could you please read and open the public hearing on item 2018-117, please, on page 15?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Old Business Open to Public Hearing, majority vote. This is item number 2018-117, appropriation order in the amount of $1,121,341 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Marine and Environmental Affairs Department General Fund Budget, as written.
My second. Go ahead, Dan. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. President, counselors. Thank you. Again, Dan Horn, Director of the Marine and Environmental Affairs Department. With me tonight, we have Nina Coleman, Sandy Neck Beach Park Manager. She's handing out the PowerPoints to you. We have Mr. Derek Lawson. He's our Marina Manager and Assistant Harbor Master and Natural Resource Officer, Amy Croto. They're here to help answer any questions and what the presentation is needed. Up the first slide is really just what we do. We try and provide services intended to protect people and their boats who use our waterways and our waterside facilities. We provide for protection, preservation, and enhancement of the town's natural resources, including Sandy Neck, and we address animal control issues that threaten the welfare quality of life of our citizens. This slide, this past season, we lost, as you know, Natural Resource Supervisor Douglas Cowett. As we developed this process, as you've heard earlier from other speakers, it starts early in the season, actually, July, August, we started thinking about it. Doug was with us, and I can tell you, towards his last days, staff would go over to his house when he couldn't make it to work. We certainly valued his input, and he certainly guided us through some of this process, through it all. We always, you know, kind of thought of Doug. The department is made up. The budget request is $1.1 million. You can see it's being broken down into two divisions, a Harbor Master Division and a Natural Resource Division, and the programs underneath each. You can see mooring waterway safety under the Harbor Master side, and Natural Resource Shellfish Animal Control on the Natural Resource side. Some of the significant changes, the fiscal year 19 budget is decreasing by 1.64% from the 18 budget. Personnel costs are increasing by $14,000. This includes contractual obligations, cost realizations because of the reorganization, and some money for some training. Our operating costs are increasing by 1820. This includes increases in fuel contract prices and some training materials. And so the total budget is being offset by a reduction of a one-time capital cost, outlay cost that we had last year for the purchase of a truck. We had one decision package request that we're requesting approval for, and that's, again, we just alluded to, is training. It's $4,950 for Harbor Master training. Harbor Masters required by law to not only get initially certified, but we also have to have annual in-service requirements as well. Some of our accomplishments over the year, in 2018, two of our staff graduated from the Intermittent Reserve Police Academy after they received required training. That's about 355 hours of training per person. So that's part of their positions. And for Harbor Masters, it's law that we get that training. We use GPS, and we pinpointed approximately 95% of our 2,300 or so moorings in the town to determine mooring compliance. It also helps us get a better idea where, you know, we can look at where the moorings are placed and see if we can make some improvements, find some space, and get people off the waiting list and out onto the water. We offered moorings to people from various town waiting lists, issuing 49 mooring permits to new holders. Our pump-out program, we disposed of 14,000-plus gallons of waste from over 514 vessels. And we continue, that says ATON upgrade through the waters. ATON stands for Age to Navigation. A few years ago, you folks approved a four-year program, or bought into a four-year program to upgrade our channel markers and signs that we place throughout the town. We gave 42 educational wildlife, and shellfish talks to schools, libraries, senior centers, private groups, and we completed nine clamming classes. Something the staff really enjoys is that public outreach program. A lot of people like that. Some of the goals coming up, we want to work with our mooring services. Again, the idea here is through better coordination, cooperation, and communication, working with them, we can tighten up the mooring fields, maybe get better alignment, freeing up more space for folks to get out in the water. So we're working on that. We're also working on an online mooring renewal program. We're looking to streamline aquaculture management to improve compliance. We're looking to install a FLUXI, that's a floating upriver system in Barnstable Harbor. We want to increase and secure Cohog and oyster seed production for the north side. And we're looking at installing a robo-call program that can be used to deliver important information. An example might be when there's a weather event and the state closes down the shell fisheries. We have to get in touch with all the commercial and aquaculture shell fishermen. And so this is one way we can do it. Instead of coming back and making calls, we can initiate it. You know, these events always seem to happen either late at night or on a weekend or things like that. So we can control that from home. And there's the appropriation order, and we'll certainly be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dan. And this is a public hearing, so if any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item. Counsel Rapgrassetti?
Thank you very much. I think you do an enormous amount with such little staff. And, you know, I think last year, I said, I think you should add some staff to help with shellfishing, because the shellfishing program is getting so big. And I know how hard Amy and everyone works with regard to shellfishing. So I don't see it here, but it'd be nice, I think, to see an increase in staff in that.
Sure, thank you. You actually did approve of a position fairly recently, the Natural Resource Aquaculture Specialist. And that's really helped us. Right now, we're comfortable where we are at the moment. If the shellfishing expands, especially in particular, you know, with water quality issues, you know, we might be back at the asking. But right now, we're doing okay. And I certainly am lucky to have the staff that I have. They do a great job for us.
Any other counselors? Counsel Wallace?
With the installation of the FLUXI in Barnstable Harbor, the primarily to, the primary reason is to secure the propagation of oysters, correct? Or is there a reason that we might use it for, you know, nitrogen mitigation as well?
I guess that's a possibility, but the intent here is for propagation purposes.
Would it have a positive effect on the nitrogen loading?
You know, I guess any shellfish in the water would have some positive impact, yes.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't put some of those maybe in North Bay or somewhere closer to Prince Cove?
Well...
Because if it does have a, if it, obviously, you can propagate oysters in a location that does have nitrogen, and I know that in some...
You gotta kind of stay within the box.
Okay, I'm getting off the track. But something you might want to consider is that...
People are on the side that do that.
We certainly are working with our Public Works Department about addressing the, you know, the nitrogen problem. Aquaculture conservably play into that. And so we'll work closely with them on that.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Within the box? Have a second? All those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous. This is item 2018-117. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. And Dan, I think you got one more item. Let's see, where is that? Counselor Cullum, could you please... Counselor Cullum, could you please read item two thousand and eighteen dash one-one-nine and open the public hearing, please?
Yes, I'd like to open item number two thousand and eighteen dash one-one-nine. Appropriation order in the amount of one million, two hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Sandy Neck Park Enterprise Fund budget as written.
Have a second. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, right there, I had the Marina one all ready to go.
I thought Lynn was doing that one. That's okay, we'll go back to it.
Okay, the Sandy Neck Enterprise Account. The objective, as you can see, is to provide access and recreational opportunities to the town's citizens and visitors while we protect the natural culture and historical The Sandy Neck Enterprise Account Fund is increasing by twenty-one point eight-five percent over the fiscal year eighteen budget. Personnel and benefit costs are decreasing by twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight, and this is primarily due to salary reallocations from the reorganization. Operating costs are increasing twenty-four to twenty-five thousand dollars to fund bathhouse improvements, the increased fuel costs and software fees, and we have a capital outlay of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, which includes equipment purchases, upgrades to facilities, facilities, excuse me, as well as sand stabilization. Here's some of the, what we just talked about and the dollar figures that correspond to that. What we did, or some accomplishments this year, we implemented a Sandy Neck Habitat Conservation Plan, and that plan and that permit allows for new plover management techniques to improve off-road vehicle access. It also continues to let us protect the nesting shorebirds. We explored new strategies for beach patron safety to address increased, the increased ORV, off-road vehicle use. Part of that is we launched a Sandy Neck application that allows for real-time updates. That was developed by our operations supervisor, Donna Bragg. We constructed an Adirondack-style lean-to at Blue's Point. It's used for camping and expeditions, you know, like the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. That was constructed by members of the Sandy Neck Board, Sandy Neck Board, and other volunteers, so you did a great job out there. Some of the goals going down the line, we were looking to install a radio frequency identification system, digital login system for the off-road vehicles, and we're looking to improve Sandy Neck resiliency to storm by raising the Sandy Neck gatehouse. That was one of the capital projects, and exploring bathhouse parking and bathhouse parking lot protection strategies. And we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have on that.
Thank you, Dan. And this is a public hearing, so if any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Counselor discussion on this item. Counselor Flores.
Thank you, Dan. Just a quick question, for the sake of perhaps our nocturnal viewers that still might be watching this program tonight. For their sake, the increase in the Enterprise Fund of approximately twenty-two percent, which I applaud everyone for obviously increasing, where is the majority of that increase generating from?
Much of that funds is going to be taken from surplus, particularly with regard to sand stabilization and raising the gatehouse. We have a healthy surplus, and it feels like it's the right type of project to address with those funds.
I raise it and ask the question basically because, obviously, Sandy Neck is one of the jewels of Barnstable, and I think we really, you know, through the services that we provide and the hard work of the staff, really do create opportunities not only for the citizenry of Barnstable, but for the folks we bring in from all over Cape Cod. It's a gem that we really need to protect and take care of.
Indeed, thank you.
Any other councilors?
Move the question.
Second. All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item two thousand and eighteen dash one-one-nine. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous, and the Vice President is off the dais. Counselor Cullum, could you please read and open the public hearing on the item two thousand and eighteen dash one-one-eight?
Yes, I'd like to open for a public hearing, item two thousand and eighteen dash one-one-eight. Appropriation order in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-two thousand and ninety-six dollars for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Marina Enterprise Fund budget as written.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. One of our two enterprise accounts, the Marina Enterprise Fund, we provide the citizens and visitors and their boats some dockage space, and we try and promote for the safe use of our waterways and our marinas and waterside facilities. The Marina Enterprise Fund is decreasing by forty-seven thousand dollars or so over fiscal year eighteen. Personnel and benefit costs are decreasing by thirty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty. These costs include contractual obligations, and again, because of the reallocations, there's some savings as well. And the annual appropriation that we ask for every year and request is twenty thousand dollars. It's for dock and pier replacement and maintenance. This year, we look to address some of the older docks at Barnstable Harbor, and we're continuing with pile replacement at the Prince Cove Marina. Some of our accomplishments, we just completed a dredge project at Gateway Marina. Because of shoaling, before, we were unable to use six slips, so the dredging project actually freed up the use of six slips, and you can see that we have four of them. We now have slip agreements with folks, and we keep two for transit. And we also completed a bulkhead project at the Prince Cove Bulkhead. It was installation of a steel bulkhead, not only stability, but now it's going to extend the life for, you know, I guess it's twenty years or more at this point is what we're looking at. Some of the things we want to do is, after the bulkhead project, we need to get a Chapter Ninety-One license for that, for that marina. We're going to be looking at repairs and upgrade and a new survey for the bulkhead at Bismarck Park. That bulkhead had a partial collapse in the nineteen nineties. We had some repairs done. They estimated about a twenty-year lifespan, so we're nearing the end of that, or we think we are, so we need to take a look at it and see what needs to be done. And we're exploring, we're thinking about the potential of a new building or a new marina facility at Prince Cove. And I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Dan. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that's unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item. Counselor Flores.
Could you remind me again what a Chapter Ninety-One license is and what it does?
Chapter Ninety-One license is really one of the many licenses that are required or going through the permitting process. It's a waterways license issued, I believe, by DEB, and what it does is it lays down exactly the work that's been done, how the marina can be used, the configuration and square footage and things like that. We had one, but it hadn't been updated for some time, so as we were going through the bulkhead project, it was brought to our attention, we need to update that.
That was my question. What happens if you don't have one?
Well, I guess you could, there's possible fines and things like that, but fortunately, we did have a license, it just wasn't up to date, and so it became abundantly clear as we went through our bulkhead project that we needed to do something.
Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Question.
Second. All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item two thousand and eighteen dash one-one-eight. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much, all of you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Have a good night. All right. I'd like to invite up Richard Scally and Counselor Schnep. Could you please read item two thousand and eighteen dash one-two-oh on page eighteen, please, and open the public hearing?
Old Business Public Hearing, Majority Vote, Item Number Two Thousand and Eighteen Dash One Twenty. Appropriation order in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Licensing Department Budget.
Technical difficulties.
Mr. President, Vice President, councilors. I'm Richard Scally. I'm here to present the Licensing Department Waits and Measures Program appropriation. This is a decrease of twenty-two point nine-one percent due to the reallocation and reassignment of duties with regards to this department. People that will be in this department are the Director, Consumer Affairs Officer, which is funded by the Police Department, the Licensing Administrator, and then the Waits and Measures Program, which is funded by the revolving fund. Some of our division accomplishments for the licensing program right now have to do with a step-by-step guide for each of the licensing types, online services. We've assisted the town manager with the guides to town, use of town property procedures, which are in process. We've received town manager approval for a new alcohol on-town property fee, and we've held compliance meetings with our liquor licensees this year and our Class One and Two licensees over the past year. We've looked at finalizing our Fourth of July vendor permits process, and we've worked with the Disabilities Commission to create a handicap access flyer for people. Some of our long-term goals have to do with working still to continue to work on the revisions to the parking lot rules and regulations, and organizing a special events support. Actually, we do support the town manager's projects with regards to special events, taxi cabs, and with regards to parking lots and permits. We also support the Licensing Authority with regards to organizing and presenting applications, violations, and disciplinary matters before the board. We process and develop the decisions with regards to all the licensing decisions, and we keep the commissions up to date on all of this statuses of licensed premises and advise them on any changes in policies as well. Short-term goals with regards to the future for licensing, continuing to work on the private parking lot regulations with the team that is still working on that with planning and development and with the town manager's office. And we are continuing to work on interdepartmental informational compliance meetings, such as special events committee meetings, and working with site plan review on applications as well. Some long-term goals have to do with revising and revising our taxi cab regulations, which have not been revised since two thousand and five and are quite antiquated at this point in time, and beginning to complete the process of including licensing in our e-permitting system as well. Our Waits and Measures Division, which some accomplishments that we've completed over the last year have to do with the Discover Barnstable Program at the Senior Center regarding Waits and Measures Program. We've created an educational display at the Bismarck Park regarding services for Waits and Measures, showing some history and some items of interest to the public. We've increased our participation with regards to the farmers' markets, compliance for scale measurements, and we have streamlined our taxi cab permit inspections and license issuances working with our Consumer Affairs Officer. Some short-term goals for the future with Waits and Measures has to do with creating an inventory database on replacement of our three trucks and beginning to implement tablets with regards to services out there on the road for our inspectors. We're going to enhance our outreach programs with regards to education for Waits and Measures, going to other towns and looking at implementing that program that we've done here at the Senior Center, and we want to increase our communications with other towns that are within our district for Waits and Measures. As you know, we service ten cities and towns here on the Cape with regards to our Waits and Measures Program, so we want to make sure we're out there and talking with them on a regular basis. And that's our program.
Thank you, Richard. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Counsel discussion on this item?
Move the question.
I got, move the question. I got the second. All those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous. This is item two thousand and eighteen dash one-two-zero. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much, Richard. Good to see you. All right. I'd like to invite up our Building Commissioner, Brian Florence, and Counselor Schnep, I think you were next. Could you please, or, yeah, you can go again. You read item two thousand and eighteen dash one-two-one and open the public hearing, please. Page nineteen.
Old Business, Open to Public Hearing, Majority Vote, Item Number Two Thousand and Eighteen Dash One Twenty-one. Appropriation order in the amount of two million, seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Inspection Services Department Budget.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Brian. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the Town Council. Thank you for your time this evening. I know it's late, so I'll be brief. So after the reorganization, or as the reorganization continues, they created Department of Inspection Services, and in keeping with town manager's instructions of customer service, bear with me, oh, here we go. We looked at renaming the department, and a lot of towns will name regulatory services that are combined, code enforcement, but that doesn't seem like it's very good customer service, so we went with Inspection Services to try to continue with that model of customer service. I was going to get into some goals and things like that, but I think we'll just, for the sake of time, excuse me, accomplishments and goals, but for the sake of time, we'll just move on. So again, it was, the department is called Inspection Services. It includes Building Services and the Health, Public Health Division. Our budget proposed for this year is two million, seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That represents an increase of eighty thousand dollars, one hundred and fifty-two or four point oh-one percent over the combined budgets from fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. The increases include personal costs, which include funding for contractual obligations, and a proposal to partially fund two positions associated with the Health Division, and you'll recognize those in a few minutes. So the Building Services Division level-funded operational and personal expenses, with the exception of contractual obligations, and so for specifics on that, as we propose, the Building Services Division would increase by nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars over FY eighteen to cover COAs and longevity. That represents a one point nine-three percent increase in that budget. Public Health Division, we level-funded operational costs. The increases that we have, again, are associated with contractual obligations and a proposal to fund, partially fund two positions. Those increases from nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars to one point zero-two-three million in FY nineteen, a total increase of sixty thousand, one hundred and sixty-five. That's a six-point-one percent increase. So what was the two positions? They were four thousand dollars to increase the working hours for an existing part-time coastal health resource coordinator position, and that's the cyanobacteria person. And then ten thousand dollars, six hundred dollars to fund two part-time seasonal water quality specialists to assist with that. And that is our budget presentation. Short and sweet for you.
Thank you, Brian. And this is a public hea- And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Council discussion on this item?
Move the question.
I have a second. All those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous. This is item 2018-121. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, good night.
All right. Councilors, we have four items left on this page, so I want to invite Lynn Plant up, our Director of Community Services, and we'll get through these. Counselor Neary, could you please read item 2018-113 and open the public hearing? Page 11.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Old Business through public hearing and requires a majority vote. For item number 2018-113, Community Services Department General Fund Budget, the appropriation order in the amount of $2,523,347 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Community Services Department General Fund Budget as written.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Lynn, if you want to introduce your staff.
I would be happy to. With us this evening is our Recreation Director, Patty Machado, our Senior Services Director, Madeline Noonan, our Golf, Director of Golf Operations, Bruce McIntyre, and up on the fourth floor is Sarah Beal, our Channel 18 interim assistant, Channel 18 Station Manager. So the General Fund consists of three different divisions, Recreation, Senior Services, and the Communications Division. And some of our accomplishments include winning for nine years in a row with the Cape Cod Life Guard Saving Competition. What I'm going to do is I'm just going to fly through these because of the late hour. You have them all in your book. I do want to point out Jake Avery, who did a lifesaving rescue last summer at Cravil's Beach. Jake was recently recognized by the American Red Cross both locally and nationally. The baby that he saved, the mom is actually an international mommy blogger, and she was, couldn't say enough wonderful things about Cravil Beach and the lifeguards in the town of Barnstable. We had Patty Machado receiving the Massachusetts Recreation and Parks Association Peter C. O'Brien Humanitarian Award. This is the highest award that you can receive as a recreation employee in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Mickey Davies was promoted from Program Coordinator to Therapeutic Coordinator. Our Youth Commission has just been outstanding this year. The picture here is with their adult advisors. They obtained funding and held a successful Fourth Annual Barnstable Seventh Grade Youth Summit and Community Prevention Forum. The Second Annual Ready-Set Work Job Fair was also a tremendous success. We actually drove people from all over the place, including a student from the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts. We provided a wide variety of programming, including mountain bikes, stand-up and paddle, mommy mixer and STEM programs. The Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority presented the Barnstable Senior Center with an eight-passenger van. With the guidance of Bridges Together, the Barnstable International, Intergenerational Team that includes Recreation Division, the Senior Services, Barnstable High School Class of 2020, the Youth Commission, and the Council on Aging created a great intergenerational team. Our oldest resident, Dorothy Robinson, is pictured with Brendan Clark, who was last year's Youth Commission Chair, and Olivia Montero, who is the president for the Class of 2020. We continue to offer adult supportive day services. Our advocacy saved clients over $1,525,000. We had 165 volunteers providing 7,300 hours valued at $171,000. We maintain the town of Barnstable's social media page, and with the March 2 storm, that wasn't a snowstorm, our followers increased by over 1,500, and it was because they weren't getting information from anywhere else. DPW wasn't plowing roads or anything, so the only way that they were getting the information is what we put out on Facebook and Twitter. We produced the weekly and monthly town newsletters as well, the FY 2016 Annual Report won second place at the Mass Municipal Association. And our decision package requests are $29,000 for tables, grills, benches. This is a continuation of our program, and I'm going to skip the goals. The next decision packages are for Senior Services. We're looking to increase the van driver hours from 30 to 37.5. We do have an issue where we have some issues with volunteers and with the van. It just makes sense to have a reliable employee driving that. We also are looking for $15,579 for evening enrichment programs during the needs assessment. It was, it was one of the number-one things that was asked for is to have evening programming. The goals, again, you can read later, and there you go.
Thank you, Lynn. And this is a public hearing. Any members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Council discussion on this item? Counselor Rap Grissette.
You've got to be quick at this time of night. Wow. Thank you, thank you very much, Lynn, and I'm glad to see you, the Evening Enrichment Program at the Senior Center. You know, not everybody can make it there between 9:00 and 5:00 because a lot of seniors are working, so that's good. I'm glad you were responsive to that, and I hope it works out.
We do, too.
Counselor Neary.
Just something quick. Thank you, Mr. President. Lynn, I just, you were flying through this, and I just think it bears just slowing down a slight bit saying, just as a Community Service Department, Senior Services Division, the advocacy part of it served 1,080 clients, achieved 100% client response and satisfaction, which resulted in $1,525,377 in savings to its clients through enrollment in public benefits. Here, here, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores.
I'd like to follow up on that comment. Now, as the liaison from the Council to the Council on Aging, you know, and attending the meetings on a regular basis, it is absolutely amazing, the bang for the buck that this town gets from that team. You know, I've gotten around to other communities over the past few months and talked about Council of Agings in other towns, and they really look to Barnstable as a model, and that's even at the state level. So we should be very proud of the fact through the leadership and the department as a whole that we have risen to that level, so hats off.
Yeah, we have a fabulous team, and as Madeline says to me on pretty much a daily basis, including yesterday, when you see one senior center, you've seen one senior center. They're all very different, and Madeline has actually taken on great leadership roles. She's the co-chair of Coast, which is the Cape Organization of Councils on Aging, or Senior Centers, and then in the future, she's going to be the vice chair of the Massachusetts Association.
Official today.
It's official today? Oh, it's official today. So.
Congratulations.
There we go. Thank you.
It's a job well done.
Any other councilors?
Move the question.
All those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous. This is item 2018-113. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Hebert, could you please read item 2018-114 and open the public hearing? Page 12.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 2018-114, appropriation order in the amount of $871,059 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Cable Television, Public Education, and Government Access Enterprise Fund Budget. This is a public hearing.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you very much. So this is a division that we affectionately call PEG because it's Public Education, Government Access Channel. Picture from left to right, we have Chris Letter, who's our video assistant, Sarah Beal from upstairs, who's our interim channel station manager, and Paula Hershey is a recent addition. She's our assistant station manager. We also work with Channel 22, which is part of the Barnstable Public School System. B2B TV is what they call it. It's Barnstable to Barnstable. They have a number of different programs that they produce. Channel 18 continues coverage of more than 23 different boards, committees, and commissions, and that results in over 40 meetings per month. That does not include any special meetings or Town Manager hearings, whether it be shellfish, aquaculture grants, fee hearings, things of that nature. We won a number of awards through the Alliance for Community Media Northeast Region Awards, and I just wanted to say that "One Bite Can Change Your Life" is not about eating. It's actually about Lyme disease. We were pleased to have Mackenzie Connor as an intern from Barnstable High School this year, and Mackenzie is actually going to be going to the University of Maine in Orno starting in the fall, and she was a great addition. She did a lot of reporting about the high school, where she was the on-air talent, working with different folks from the high school. With the help of IT Director Dan Wood, we upgraded the equipment in the hearing room to include your confidence monitors, and we also got a new smart board in the Selectmen's Conference Room. The camera equipment in the TV studio was also upgraded. And the goals you can read later, and there you go.
Thank you, Lynn. And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Council discussion on this item?
Move the question.
All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item 2018-114. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Lebec, could you please read item 2018-115 and open the public hearing?
Oh, the irony. Thank you, Mr. President. Old Business Public Hearing, this is item number 2018-115. Appropriation order in the amount of $3,679,238 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Golf Course Enterprise Fund Budget as written.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you. We celebrated the 25th anniversary of Old Barnstable Fairgrounds opening, and we were once again voted in the top 25 places to play for the fifth year in a row. We completed Phase 2 of the Facility Upgrade Program at Old Barnstable Fairgrounds, which included all doors and windows, which were replaced with high-efficiency units. The wraparound deck was replaced, and a second awning installed, and upgrades to the HVAC system were made, and the building was painted inside and out. We completed Phase 2 of the Facility Upgrade Program for the Hyannis Golf Course. This included a new main entrance, which included the construction of a handicap accessible ramp. The huge rear deck now has two entrances, stairways and new awning, and the interior stairwell, which was really a danger, was also replaced. We completed turf maintenance equipment purchase at Hyannis Golf Course. We replaced kitchen equipment at OBF. The first tee continues to grow. It is the largest first tee program in the state of Massachusetts. And our decision package request here is for $30,000 to increase pro-shop line items, which we hope will result in additional sales. The goals you can read later, and that's it.
Thank you very much. And this is a public hearing, so if any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Council discussion on this item?
Move the question.
All those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous. This is item 2018-115. All those in favor of this item? And that's unanimous. Counselor Dagwan, could you please read item 2018-116 and open the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. President. Excuse me. Item 2018-116, appropriation order in the amount of $3,298,434 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2019 Hyannis Youth and Community Center Enterprise Fund Budget. So before a public hearing and majority vote.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you very much. So we have a number of activities that take place at the Hyannis Youth and Community Center for a wide range of age of citizens within the town. In addition to high school activities like basketball and volleyball, the gymnasium is used for different events, like the Festival of Museums that just happened, and we also did mixed martial arts a couple of times. We're home rink for a multitude of youth hockey activities, and we're home ice for Barnstable, St. John Paul II, and the Mashpee-Mottamoy Co-op. We partnered with the Yarmouth Ice Club to host the Cranberry Open Figure Skating Competition in August of 2017, and with the Born Skating Club to host the Cape Cod Synchronized Skating Competition in December of 2017. In August, it was about 400 skaters, and in December, it was 1,000 skaters. These are people that were bringing, they were renting rooms, they were having meals, they were shopping, so they actually helped contribute to the General Fund in those respects. We implemented a number of community service programs. We attained 100% funding for lunch during the summer months and a healthy snack, afternoon snack, at the HYCC year-round. And that's a really big deal because, as you know, where the facility is built, there's a lot of people who have food insecurities, and to be able to provide that is really great, and I have to give credit to Mark Borley and John Gleason, who made that happen for us. Our two decision packages here are to replace the furniture in the youth center game room and then to fund the sixth, seventh grade after-school program.
Great. Thank you, Lynn. This is a public hearing, so any members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? That's unanimous. Council discussion on this item? Counselor Lebec.
You guys do a great job. I just, I haven't said anything at all in this meeting, so I saved my bullet. But I just have to commend you on the hard work that you put in and the genuine care that you put in for these children of our community and the investment that you put in time-wise. Obviously, it's, you know, the town's council's choice to, or decision to put that forward, but at the same time, I'm confident that you're going to put that resources to good use and invest it in these kids and the youth of Barnstable. And I think it's just as important to have something like this and have these programs as it is to have for even the school, just because it affects kids year-round. Obviously, in the summertime, kids that come in from out of town, they can participate in those programs as well, and they do. And so, again, I just commend you on all the hard work that you put forth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Move the question.
Counselor Dagwan?
No.
Counselor Dagwan?
It's all right. I just wanted to say, I mean, I live in that community and just all the wonderful programs that are put together through the Youth and Community Center. And when I'm in the building, there's something going on, and we have visitors, they're always talking about our HYCC. So I think that's a tribute to you and Patty and the staff over there that does so much for the community. And this past weekend, to be out there just before it rained, to see the skate park, all the skateboarders come and enjoy the opening of the skate park. It was nice that Counselor Hebert joined, well, he came before I got there, but joined me and Paula Snap as well to be a part of the ceremony, the ribbon cutting. So that was, that was a big day for me, too.
Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Move the question.
All those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous. This is item 2018-116. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much, and all of you, thank you. Vice President Kroger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to open and continue the individual public hearings on items number 2018-0126 through 2018-137, individual public hearings on June 7, 2018.
All those in favor of opening and continuing the public, individual public hearings on items 2018-126 to item 2018-137 to June 7, 2018? And that is unanimous. All right. Counselor Flores, under New Business, could you read item 2018-146 and refer to a public hearing on June 7, 2018? Page 42.
New Business refer to a public hearing on June 7, 2018, item number 2018-146. Appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $100,000 for the fiscal year 2018 Airport Capital Budget for the purpose of funding various airport capital improvement projects as written.
All those in favor of referring item 2018-146 to a public hearing? All those in favor referring item twenty eighteen dash one-four-six to a public hearing on June seventh, two thousand and eighteen? And that is unanimous, and we're going to have Lynn back. Sorry, we missed that one. Counselor Wallace, could you please read item twenty eighteen dash one-four-seven?
Certainly, Mr. President. This is new business. This may be acted upon. It's item number twenty eighteen dash one forty-seven, an acceptance of a gift in the amount of nine thousand seventy-nine dollars from the friends of the Barnstable Council on Aging to support the transportation program at the Barnstable Senior Center. That's written.
Welcome back, Lynn.
Thank you very much. This is a gift to, for a Toyota Camry lease. Currently, we have a Nissan Leaf, and that lease is expiring, and we found a great deal of success with having a smaller car. There are some seniors that don't like getting into a van, and it also is something that the volunteers tend to like to drive better than the van. So, the friends of the Council on Aging were more than willing to help us pay for this lease, and the only fiscal impact is that if we need gas, because it's a hybrid, we think that we won't be needing any gas, but we may, and it would be covered from the Formula Grant that we received from the Massachusetts Office of Elder Affairs, and we are extremely grateful to the friends for this generous gift.
Thank you. Counsel discussion on this item? Counsel Hebert.
Lynn, I got to remind you, I mean, I drive a hybrid, and I do get sixty-five miles to a gallon, but you do have to remember to put gas in it.
Yes. We know that we need to, but we also know that we can charge it, so.
Any other counselors?
Move the question.
All those in favor moving the question? That's unanimous. This is item twenty eighteen dash one-four-seven. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Lebec, since you keep looking at me. Item, could you please read item twenty eighteen dash one-four-eight and refer to a public hearing on June seventh, two thousand and eighteen?
Oh, I'd love to comment. Yes, Mr. President. I look at everybody while I'm talking. This is new business. Refer to a public hearing on six-seven, two thousand and eighteen, it's item number two thousand and eighteen dash one-four-eight, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of community preservation funds for creation and acquisition of conservation restriction two point one, I'm sorry, it's two point one eight acres, thirty-four, thirty-six hundred, found with Road Marshes Mills Map zero-seven-seven, parcel zero-zero-five, as written.
All those in favor referring item twenty eighteen dash one-four-eight to a public hearing on June seventh, two thousand and eighteen? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please read item twenty eighteen dash one-four-nine?
Thank you. This is under new business, first reading, refer to a second reading on June seventh. Item twenty eighteen one-four-nine, appointments to a board committee or commission resolved. The town council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission. Disability Commission, Steven Spillane, Centerville as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Youth Commission, George Cole, Hyannis, as a regular student member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and nineteen.
Have a second. This is item twenty eighteen dash one-four-nine, appointments to a board committee or commission. All those in favor referring this to a second reading on June seventh, two thousand and eighteen? And that is unanimous. Counsel Rap Grissette, can you continue on with item twenty eighteen dash one-five-zero?
Again, a first reading under new business, refer to a second reading on June seventh. Item twenty eighteen one-five-zero, reappointments to a board committee or commission resolved. The town council reappoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission. Airport Commission, Mary Smith, as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. John Griffin, regular member, term expiring two thousand and twenty-one. Joseph Berlandi, regular member, term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. On the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, John Schoenheer as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Hector Gunther as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Joseph Mlad, I knew I'd have trouble with this one, Mladdenich as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Conservation Commission, Dennis Hoel as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Community Preservation Committee, FP Tom Lee as a regular member to a term, excuse me, as a Conservation Commission representative member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Council on Aging, Helen Stretch as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. John Alden as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Anna Velasquez as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Barbara Cross as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. On the Disability Commission, Sheila Mulcahy as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Historical Commission, Elizabeth Mumford as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Cheryl Powell as an alternate member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Marilyn Fifield is a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. On the Housing Committee, Donald Lynde as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Human Services Committee, Scott Fitzgerald as a representative member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. JFK Memorial Trust Fund, Robert Jones as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Lynn Pointe as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. And the Library Committee, Suzanne Kelly for Sturgis Library, Christine Lapine for Weldon, Lori Young representing Osterville, Karen Resendez, Centerville Library, Margaret Stutfina as a regular member for Centerville, and Fred Schlipp as a regular member representing Sturgis Library, all these to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and nineteen. Licensing Authority, Larry Decker as an associate member, term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Oaklands Highway Historic District Commission, Polly Brazelton as an alternate member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Planning Board, Stephen Hellman as a regular member, term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Water Quality Advisory Committee, Barry Gallus as a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Waterways Committee, John Mead as a regular member, term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Robert Hazelton, regular member, term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. And lastly, Zoning Board of Appeals, Jake Dewey and Paul Pennard, excuse me, Jake Dewey is a regular member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. Paul Pennard is an associate member, term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one. And Kyle Evanco is an associate member to a term expiring six-thirty two thousand and twenty-one, as read.
Nice job of that. It's one of the, one of the, one of the perks of being the chair of the appointments committee. So, this is item twenty eighteen dash one-five-zero, reappointments to a board committee or commission. All those in favor referring this to a second reading on June seventh, two thousand and eighteen? And that is unanimous. Our next regular meeting is Thursday, June seventh, two thousand and eighteen. I want to wish everyone a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend, which is coming up, and do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Have a good night, everybody.